Okay. The normal announcements about the meeting being broadcast. This is also an update that the open session is starting at six tonight, obviously. We may or may not continue at six, so be sure to check the website if you want to know what time the meeting starts. Nomination papers are available for local offices. Contact the town clerk's office to see what positions are available. Residential primary on Tuesday, March 5th. Last day to request vote by mail ballot is February 27th.
That whole week is early voting as well.
Okay, the whole week of February 27th?
Yeah, so it starts on the 24th and then 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30.
And what are the hours?
Regular office hours, so eight to 4:30, except on the 24th, I have to go to five, which is state mandate. And then we're going to stay later on the 27th, 7:00.
Great. The Sage Center is having a lunch and learn session on the Senior Tax Circuit Breaker Tax Relead Program. So anybody interested in applying for that, it's a good opportunity to learn about it, 11:30 to 1:00. And as always, we're looking for volunteers on a number of boards and commissions. And remember to subscribe for email town agendas, news, and announcements. Regular business, public comment. Would anybody like to make a public comment? All right. Consent agenda, there's none. Town manager updates. Do you want me to keep going?
I have not looked at the packet for the last few days because I'm focused on the budget. But so, let's see, the, so the articles packets. I did make just a couple of changes coming out of last Tuesday's meeting. Took out a couple that were removed, added, and reordered a bit. Some of the ones that came in late, just put them in logical order, as we talked about after, or in last week's meeting. We will keep that numbering consistent through the process until we get to toward the end of March, at which point presumably some number of things that are on there now may have dropped off the table, and others you may want to reorder, you know, for other reasons, or make a decision about really what's going to be on annual versus special. Because what's in there is just, just a conversation starter. That's ultimately going to be up to you, what's annual special. So toward the end of March, toward the Finkham process, we'll assign numbers at the time that the actual warrants are being prepared. So, the...
Can I ask a question before we move on? So for the, like, the pickleball study, if the dollar amount of that has changed, do you want to wait till it's approved by CPC before updating the amount in the spreadsheet?
I would say, yeah, I would say so. Yeah, I mean, good to share information about it, but I think, yeah, we don't want to be chasing our own tail on some of the numbers. So we are going to, right now it's all posted as a single packet. We are going to break that up into separate attachments for each article. I think that's going to be easier for people to access the information they're looking for, and it's also going to make more sense for us updating things so that, for instance, if we get new information on the pickleball study, we're not reposting, you know, 40-meg file. So that is going to, because of how our website interface is set up, that is a few hours of work to, you know, post and link all of those separate items. So I've got Rebecca lined up to work on that later this week, so that we'll have... And it's also, I mean, some of them are really very routine articles, whereas some are very high-profile articles. But I think it's probably just best to have all of them, even if the backup is just a single sheet of paper. Whereas for others, it'll be, it'll be a lot more linked because of, you know, like the wetlands by law programs and so. But we will be working to make all those articles kind of reorganized, to make them that much easier to find, and then to send, post something to the town website, social media, to let everyone know that articles are there. The other thing that Wendy and I talked about, I know you put together for tonight's packet the two draft bylaw amendments on the annual bylaw on the hunting. I didn't go ahead and put those in the packet because I want to wait till they come out of this board and then put them in. And that's generally, it's really in line with what you said about CPC. So we'll wait until, you know, we'll wait until whomever is the sponsor has kind of...
Blessed.
Blessed, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
So that's the first item. On the second item for updates, we had, I think, a, you know, very good start to the capital process on Thursday night. The board committee was there. We walked through all the articles. They assigned a member of the committee to kind of do a deeper dive on each of the articles. I've circulated the, you know, contact information to the department heads and to the CIC members. So I think over the next, you know, two weeks or so, they'll be connecting and kicking the tires and so forth. So I think, you know, that's off to a good start. I did include in tonight's packet the overall capital program, which we could either talk about in tonight, or we could talk about, you know, at a future meeting. But certainly with the Finkham, I expect that would be something that, you know, the focus will be the FY25 articles, but, you know, we want to update the overall, you know, capital program so people have an idea of what's ahead as well.
Rick, I think I'll wait maybe till the end of the process to send the questionnaire, because it's a new group and it seems kind of premature to do it now. It might be better at the end.
You mean, the committee, the board will...
Yeah. Yeah, which makes sense.
Yeah, probably does.
Yeah. I was also thinking, Angus, if there's proposed revisions to the bylaw, that might make sense towards the meeting as well, instead of getting bogged down in that, but...
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Middle Street Bridge, we included, yeah, so there's not a lot of new information that you don't already know there, but we do have a meeting coming up this Wednesday with the mayor and his team. And we did get confirmation earlier today that they had given the go-ahead to the project engineer to go ahead and submit for the Manton Small Bridge Grant. So we're hopeful that that would bring an additional $500,000 of state money to the project. Still a sizable gap between available funds and estimated costs. For that drill, it's going to be the focus of the meeting on Wednesday with the mayor. And have had some correspondence with members of the city council, including the council president. And we do expect that the correspondence we sent out about two weeks ago is going to be referred to subcommittee of the council, and once that happens, that does get agendaed on a subcommittee meeting, and would therefore be an opportunity for the town to, you know, appear and have that conversation in a public meeting. So I think that's some progress. But we still haven't gotten a straight answer from the Fed on whether it's eligible for that bridge formula program. So we'll continue to look at that. Next item is just informational update. Last week, we had one of our routine EMA practice exercise drills. There were a couple FEMA officials, president, chief wire, and everybody in the public safety did an awesome job. It was really very well organized. It's a great team that we have over there. So this is all, as you know, from prior years, working toward a graded exercise that'll happen later this year. Where FEMA actually, this is all just a practice exercise at this point.
So is there another practice before the graded?
I can't remember. I think there are three in total, and this was the second, so I think the third one is the graded one. There is a training this Wednesday that Rebecca and I and others in the town office, as well as members of public safety, will be participating in on squatting, hoaxes, and bomb threat training, which, you know, is unfortunate, is, you know, in reality, we have to be prepared for to the extent possible.
So we're supposed to get an email sometime earlier that day?
Late, late tomorrow or that day.
Yeah. And following up on the board's discussion last week, we had sent the correspondence out to the state regarding the Middle Street Bridge as a top priority item for next year. So I just included that in the packet, just to close the loop on that item. And that's all I have. I did press pause on the livery revisions. I think that warrants more, more discussion, so we can bring that up at a future meeting.
Or did you have any other updates?
No, I didn't. All right, included, Christine had sent an email around to the Stormwater Group, and I thought, you know, there was a fair amount of substance in it, so I'll just drop that in just as, really just insight as to some of what's being talked about at the staff level, Stormwater and Calvert grant. Definitely the new DEP regs are something that people are looking at. The comment deadline is extended. I know that the CONCON is going to be looking at that closely. If the board wants to think about putting in its own comments, that's something we should think about, putting on an agenda for a future meeting.
The deadline is when?
They just pushed it out to, they extended it about a month, to April 30th. Actually, I think they gave it to you. Okay, yeah.
I haven't looked at it, but if she's...
I have not either.
Yeah, April 30th is the deadline for comments, and that's updates to both the wetlands and the waterways regulations.
Was this something that we want to comment on as a board, or just as individuals?
I think the, to do it between now and that timeframe, the question is awful going on.
Yeah, probably not.
What I can do is just as, you know, as I start to hear comments, either from individual staff members or CONCON, we can just share those, and then if the select board wants to jump in on that, maybe after the, you know, wet season, there's, there is a short amount of time between the end of the Finkham process and town meeting, so that April timeframe might be in time to get in.
Yeah, it'd be great if, you know, it'd be great if we all had a fine degree in everything that's available and didn't need to watch any recorded sessions, but being realistic on the children. You know, I don't know if Michelle or anybody else would be prepared to spend 15 minutes and kind of brief us on. I'm sure they don't.
Yeah, I was sort of thinking the same thing. I've got a level of confidence with her comments, because everything she's put out has been so exceptional. So just to pretty much hear her input will be...
It will be...
Take a lot off of us.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I will say, you know, this is just a preliminary observation, or just a kind of a concern on the horizon, is we've seen the impact of natural heritage on some of the local projects, like Calvert replacements or high-hazard tree removals, and the additional paperwork and time that that takes. Not to diminish its importance, but it does take paperwork and it does take time. That came up briefly at the, at a meeting we had last week regarding the river road resiliency planning and some of the potential strategies there, and as well as, you know, the real concern and the, you know, interest in trying to mitigate what, you know, the risks that that area faces. The natural heritage program is, as preliminarily advised, Michelle, and she's heard through her networks, it can take a couple of years to get through that process. So that's something that at a staff level, we thought last week that it would make sense to reach out to MVPSC to see if they could have a conversation among the region on whether there's any potential that natural heritage could expedite a process for things that are kind of driven by mitigation and an intent to protect infrastructure and property. We don't know that there is. So for example, right now in the Weapons Protection Act, as you know, there's, in very limited instances, the CONCON can authorize an emergency certificate. It's very limited. It's got to be a real emergency. But there is no comparable language in the natural heritage framework. So that's something that's, you know, potential concern. And we thought that if that was brought up among the region, first of all, we're certain that other communities would share an interest in the topic, but also we don't want to, you know, have a target in the backboard. Because if we go and ask natural heritage, they'll say, yes, you got to do X, Y, and Z, and we're watching. But we found it just, it's a, it's a collective, you know, issue. But, you know, a year ago, we looked into, with town council, we looked into whether, you know, moorings needed natural heritage review, and they said that they do. And our town council said she'd never heard of that, and that if that was true, that that, in some of the coastal community she, she works for, she's like, that would be incredible. Because like, if every annual mooring needed goes, like, you can't spend your entire year in permanent. Like, and she said, like, she's not aware that in any of the, you know, the Chatham's or whatever, that she's not aware that anyone's doing that. But when Michelle asked the question, they said, yeah, there's no exemption in the, in the regs for that. And if you followed through on that literally, that would be a, pardon the pun, a sea change in how people handle moorings. So we have a similar concern on things like some of the strategies that are expected to come out of the River Road resiliency study is confirming implications of that.
Right.
So I don't know whether these waterways have any, anything to do with that, whether it would make it easier or harder, but I haven't looked at them.
So the office hours is just like a general open session, like literally office hours?
I'm not sure. Probably like a listening session.
Yeah, that's...
I've not seen anything like that before.
Yeah, nor have I, but, you know, a presentation, it looks like they were launching them, and quite honestly, I was blissfully ignorant there. And that would have been, you know, better for kind of overview, as opposed to going to the office hours, where there are going to be specific questions addressing specific parts that I knew without that, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense from.
Okay. I think having Michelle or speak and... So the town meeting logistics?
So we, Angus and I had a conversation about the size of town meeting, particularly with the amount of articles that we have. And the question of, is it, should we consider alternative sites, particularly seeing we have about 300 at our last town meeting, annual town meeting, and that was pretty much capacity. Let's wear two, and so I recently moved to Jonathan, yeah, from Kentucky Park, regarding whether Page School was an optional in Kentucky. Both are available that evening. And then the second question being, do we have to do a second night with so many articles? And both, both evenings are available if we were to do back-to-back, so if we did a Monday, Tuesday. If we didn't want to do that, and we wanted to do a different day, that's, that's a different question. But I had a conversation with Casey about acoustics. And so I'm going to try to set up a meeting with Jonathan, Brian, myself, and Casey, and we can go with some speakers and kind of test out to see whether good or bad in those particular areas. There will be people sitting around to buffer sound a little bit, but maybe you can get as much kids to stand out there. Get the kids to fill in the auditorium. But I think the idea would be either the gymnasium, which has a stage, a page, or the auditorium at the Kentucky. And so I guess the question is, what's the preference of the board? Do we want to just try to do one, two? And if we have to do two nights, we just announce it early on? Do we hope that we don't have to go to a second night?
I think we need to plan on it.
Yeah.
So I don't know, what do you think we'd get the best attendance at? If we do two nights in a row, or like, two Mondays in a row, or Monday, Thursday, or something?
Not to speak for Casey, but we did have a conversation about what would be best. My, my personal preference is, is to say, try to get them Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah.
I, I think extending it another week would be difficult, because then people say, oh, wasn't that last week? Are they maybe forgetful, just as...
Plus the election.
Yeah, the election literally is the next Monday. So it might be an option to do the next Monday. It would have to be either next Tuesday, or... So it really does slow it off, or even if we separated it out by the week, people forget, or the topic isn't as important to them, so they just don't show up Wednesday or Thursday, if there was a separate day.
Casey, is that your opinion as well? Do it Monday, Tuesday?
Interesting, one of the, one of, I think it was one of the bylaws that they proposed changes for. I noticed that the, there was an adoption of the bylaw, and it said it was the fourth night of that particular town meeting. I don't remember anything like that.
I mean, it's been quite a while. I've, I've never had, since I've been here, which has gone on three years now. I, I've never seen a second night. I'd have to ask Casey, do you remember what the last time we went to?
We used to have more than one night almost all the time.
Yeah.
But that was back in the 80s, 90s maybe. And I don't remember one in recent history, but I do know that a lot of towns have town meetings that go on for four or three nights. It's, it's not unheard of. It just depends on, on, you know, how active people are in participating in the discussions and stuff like that, so.
Also, if the moderators haven't been meeting, their control runs away.
Oh, yeah.
And when I was in Marshfield, it was always three, often four, and it was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday.
Wow.
And Westford, they did them on Saturdays. They started at eight. And they would usually get it done that day, but it would go till four or three. They would have lunch break in the middle. And sometimes if a thing gets done on Saturday, they go then till Monday. But those are towns, 23,000, 24,000 people with open town meeting.
How many articles do we usually have?
Forty to 45.
We're going to have 50% more this time, so it's going to be...
Yeah, and as, and as you know, some very high-profile ones.
And some contentious comments on the internet that might drive people to talk a little long.
Yeah.
So you're pretty much going to need two nights.
Yeah.
I think consecutive days are probably best, just to get everybody fresh.
Any thoughts on Page versus Kentucky?
If we could get Penn Tuck, I just think it's a bad effect. It's a mess. There, there will be, I know that Tuesday, he said there will be a school for the meeting that evening, and he anticipates there to be sports every night, especially in April. So that may factor into...
The parking.
Parking and a lot of people in the space and...
Yeah, probably parking, it seems to me, I mean...
Is the Page School set up for something like this?
It would have, we'd have to put on chairs, full chairs, just like we do here, and the speaker system and things like that. So that's not the problem. The problem is what's our preference, and if it's good acoustics, because we all know what bad acoustics sound like, and it's not a good basis.
So they must, they must have shows and stuff that they, that the kids do. You know, there must be events at Page School. Has anybody asked the principal what, how it works, you know, how, how are the acoustics?
That's kind of the conversation we'll have with Jonathan on Sunday.
Yeah, okay.
But additionally, I mean, the...
But I almost think the principal would have, you know, more...
Yeah, I would hope they were then the principal.
Yeah.
When we go, yeah. The, the other thing is maybe we do want to do Page because we want to highlight...
That's what I'm thinking.
What Page is...
I like the idea of Page.
Page is on the agenda coming up big time, so don't let people get a little glimpse of it. And the auditorium, gymnasium, whatever it is, is the most updated feature of the building. But it's not significantly different than out, out here, with the stage up front and the chairs as well.
So I guess we'll wait and see what the acoustics situation is before we decide.
I, I don't anticipate, I mean, having, I assume they have graduations there. I assume there, it's not terrible. So it just, whichever one sounds better.
Okay. All right, so we'll continue with that for the next meeting.
I'll let you know, I'll let you know once we have the meeting set up, and then I'll try to meet after that.
All right.
Have an agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, IMC reconstruction meeting for the Church and Prospect Street.
Just, just the FYI, obviously with the forecast, it's probably a pretty good chance tomorrow's meeting won't happen as scheduled, so... But this is, it's great to see this. It's not always, I don't think they need to post the agenda. It's great that they did for, you know, transparency, but it's not a, you know, it's more just an coordinating meeting with the contractor, public safety, water, public courts, and so forth, so... You know, it's a multi-million dollar project, so...
Okay, moving on to item E, board committees and commissions updates. So the first is, is Alisa with us?
No.
So review of the Climate Change Resiliency Committee questionnaire. So you're speaking on behalf of them?
I guess I will, yeah, I thought it was going to be here. I always should have reminded her.
Do you want to check, and then are you going to do it inside?
Yeah, let me, yeah, it's good, yeah, I'll shoot it.
It's a CONCON's meeting tonight, right?
Yes.
So she's probably coming for that, maybe she might not realize.
Realize that it's a seven bucks, or, or it's a six bucks, or...
I did get an application for the finance committee today.
Did you?
I did.
Nice.
I'm just going to vote it around.
All right.
And then tell you guys hopefully for the next meeting.
And then we'll still be one short, right?
Yeah, but five gives way a room, especially if, however, for some reason it's unable to do...
Yeah, it would be nice if they could be part from the beginning of the process. So who want to be? Well, Rick is texting, or do you want to wait here?
Hang on a second.
So item B, this is what I brought up at the end of the last meeting, just about what role the select board should have. I mean, obviously, we appoint committees, members to committees and commissions, but how much of a role should the committee itself have? So I'm just interested in your input, so that if I make a judgment call like I did at the last meeting, defer to them, but I don't know how much followers going to be with the two of you. Do you have any thoughts on it, Chris?
No, we've had the discussion before. Did we ask the committees if they have, you know, if it wasn't a joint meeting, we asked if they have a preference. I'm not sure you should or not, I mean...
Well, what's your opinion? Do you feel the select board should just appoint regardless of what the committee wants?
No, because I think information is good. It's better to know. I mean, I remember years ago in the past, like, we were appointing sometimes knowing they were disrupting, and that wasn't always the best. I guess it's always good to hear their opinion, but then how committed are you with that opinion afterwards? You know, are you able to sit there and say, well, thank you, but we're going to go the other direction? I don't know. That's where it gets dicey, because you're supposed to be the appointing authority. What's your objective? So I don't have a clear answer.
Yeah, I, I think it's good to hear feedback, if it's available, from, from the committee, and particularly from the chair, if the chair's been in dialogue with the person.
Yeah.
But I don't think that should be the only thing you think about. I mean, frequently, it will, because we don't have any other background, and, and, you know, they, they have a better idea. I mean, we will have looked at their questionnaire and, you know, have an understanding of what their goals and plans are, but... Yeah, I look at their comments from the committee or from the chair as being sort of steering information.
Okay, and so if we're in a situation where it's a joint appointment again, do you feel like we should still take the lead on it, or allow the committee that's being appointed to the...
Well, I think that's the more important question. I don't think it matters as long as we know going into that.
But that's what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As you, you're not an appointing authority with a joint meeting.
Yeah.
We had this in the past with school committee. It was helping us to get the, the remaining school committee reps in the select board. And it takes to lead. It was traditionally the select board. Um, and again, I'm not sure if that's very wrong, but you should know going into those meetings ahead of time. That's all.
Yeah. I mean, I, I prefer to, to defer to the committee, um, if you, as long as that's all right with you.
I don't have a problem. So make that known.
Yeah.
Going in. That's all I have.
Yeah, but, you know, at the same time, if, if, if we have some information that we think is important in, in the decision, I think that should be.
Oh, we should vote what we think. I'm just saying in terms of making the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Just.
Whether the meeting gets conducted in the process.
Yeah. Okay, great. Uh, any word from Alisa?
Not yet.
Okay. Um, item C, upcoming meeting of the Board of Water Commissioners.
Uh, so I saw them post this. I wanted to put it in just so you're aware. Obviously they're working toward the, uh, uh, rate hearing. Uh, I don't know that they've pinned down a specific date, but they've talked more. Yeah. So I think, I think, and Rob, uh, might know more because I know he's been working with, uh, um, member of the Water Commission maybe more, uh, but they, I, I don't know if this is their last meeting before the rate hearing or.
I, I hope so.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm expecting that they're gonna make a decision about it and then be able to speak to when they're going to hold the public hearing. That's my hope. We haven't, you know, without the Board of Water Commissioners, you can't, we, we can't really set anything. So this meeting is where I expect them to take a decision and then set, make a decision about when to hold.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll be at the meeting.
This one, yeah.
Yeah. And, and Rick, what, the, the email was about, uh, it's gonna be in the second floor hearing room.
Okay.
And the only piece of help we could use is Jack has graphs and tracks that he wants to show. So, um, so if we could have some help, uh, making sure it gets set up. It's not a recorded meeting. It's not a Zoom meeting, but, uh, we, we can use the technical support.
He would just need to email it to you?
Yeah, as long as, uh, I get it beforehand, minutes beforehand, we can put it on flash.
Okay.
Set up. It's not a problem.
Okay.
Or if he just brings it on flash.
Yeah, he was, I think he was thinking of bringing his laptop and just opening up the same way. That's what I think. Cause I think he wants to be able to go between, uh,
Okay.
You know how you jump around between these stuff. So I think that's all he wanted. I, he could probably do it himself, but you know how it is. I mean.
Yeah, but I think it's pretty easy to set up.
It is. Yeah, exactly. We still feel more comfortable.
Yeah.
You know, having, having.
But a professional.
For that.
Yeah. So the last item on their agenda is.
You're not looking at me, is it?
Thank you. No, I, I, I didn't want to insult you by not looking at you.
It's okay. I'm gonna be offended.
So the other thing, obviously, uh, also what we're doing is, um, you know, this time around, we're gonna present revenues and expenses. So we'll have a discussion of, you know, what you would think of this, the entirety of the budget thing. So you'll, you'll see how revenues play out against the expenses. You know, there's some questions, you know, of how you bring it all together. Cause you'll get stabilization funds and retained earnings. But we're, we're trying to stay with a kind of P and L format. And then there'll be stuff outside of that, like, like there's some open warrant. Um, so, you know, making sure we understand what's still open for available spending is important. You don't see it in the operating budget because it's a warrant article off to the side, but we're trying to make sure we have a handle on those.
Okay.
So you should be feeling comfortable.
Yeah. So, um, this last item is re, review of the draft, uh, rate study. So if that's not final, how can, I mean, that's not part of the decision on, on the rates then.
We have a, we, we're looking at their agenda.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, so that's still not finalized, the rate study right now. Okay.
The, the document isn't necessarily final, like we, we've done what we've discussed, which is going on, in depth, in our own rate analysis. For better or for worse.
So perhaps we need to cut you a chart.
I'll say that twice though.
Yeah, yeah.
Say, hey, uh, Rob, one thing I noticed, uh, I'll, I'll bring it up on Wednesday as well. Okay. Is, uh, the, uh, amount that the fire department budgets each year to pay to water, uh, for the hydrants.
Yeah.
Uh, it was, I believe in the current FY twenty-four, it's eighty-one, five, ten. And in the draft data Howard rate, rate study, it's like seventy-eight something. It's like a couple of thousand less.
So there's a couple of different things that go on in that account.
Yeah.
So that account, unfortunately, so I wouldn't do the child accounts the way they do it. So there is a significant line item, which is the fire hydrants, and that's X amount for fire hydrant. But then there's other stuff that also goes into that account.
Mm-hmm.
So for instance, oddly, when they close out an account, someone moves out of town, instead of the amount that's billed going to that line, that is for water billings, because it's not done in the regular cycle, they put it into that same account. So, so that account has a couple, few different things running through it. And so, you know, that's also revenues or estimated revenue. So, so basically the amounts that we're going with are pretty much except for the water usage line, is gonna be the stuff that you've been using. So we're not really changing that, but, but you know, if you want to deep down dive into that account, you're gonna have to pull out, someone's gonna have to pull out three or four hundred dollars to go into it.
Ooh, but what I'm saying is for purposes of carrying a expense amount in the fire department budget, I, I kept the same as the FY twenty-four, even though the Tated Howard rate study showed a lower number, uh, cause I don't see.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is part of that is something to do with what comes from the fire account. That's what I'm trying to say.
But I'm not, all I'm concerned about is what.
Yeah, exactly. Right. So it's a per hydrant amount. It should be easy to derive. Black notes that. It's just a per hydrant. There's X amount of hydrants, uh, X rate. That, that's what comes from the fire account. Because we can get that number specifically on Wednesday.
Right, you think?
Jenny, does that make sense?
Did I, I think I recall that, that number's going up a little bit. Is that?
Well, that's, that's why I bring it out because it's, it's, uh, the rate study's showing us a, a lower number.
Yeah.
Uh, I, for the purpose of the expense budget I'm gonna present in a short time, I carry the same number as FY twenty-four. It's, the difference is only three thousand dollars, but.
What I'm trying to say is we're not changing that amount. Whatever it was, it remains. It's just you can't derive that amount from that single line. It's after, just go to the form. It's a form. It's X amount of hydrants, type, X amount of water. That's it. That ends the conversation. We can find out Wednesday. We can still adjust any number you presented in your budget. Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, yeah.
Jenny, were you gonna say something? No, I don't, but, all right. All right. So let's go back to item A, which is review of the climate change resiliency committee questionnaire.
Yeah.
Alisa, thanks for joining us.
Okay. Hi, sorry, I'm here. Wait a minute, I'll, I'll actually show myself. There we go.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you again for filling this out so properly. Sorry it's taken so long. Uh, Chris, any questions?
No, I'm just, I think we just say thanks to Alisa for all the work she did. It's amazing.
Um, I, I did have a question for you, Alisa.
Yes.
On, on the question, how can the select board town manager better support? Um, the, your comment was about the time of completion of the annual town report. So I, I just wasn't clear on, on what you need and for what.
So we need to do in the spring, every year, a report in order to keep our MVP community status.
Mm-hmm.
And we're supposed to report on all the different things that the town has done. Um, including, you know, and I know this because I can find it on the town website, the DPW, um, announcements about saving water. Uh, but it would be really helpful if we could look at what the planning board is doing, what all the different, you know, reports that come from the different committees. That would be really helpful in putting together our report about everything the town's doing. It has to do with potentially climate change issues.
And so is the issue that the annual town report is the prior fiscal year?
No, the is, the issue is that we're a couple of years behind.
Okay.
Because I haven't had time to write my town reports.
Right, okay.
This is the issue.
But we have made, passed several available online.
Yeah.
With just blanks for the town manager section.
Okay.
If you were to sneak me a copy of the, the various committee reports, that could do it too.
So, so, yeah, we, we actually are in the final stages of the current annual town meeting.
Which is FY twenty-three.
Yeah, we're in twenty-three, the town report.
Okay.
So, uh, there's just a couple of tweaks and then.
Okay.
I can shoot her a copy.
So that can be shared in draft four if it's not complete? Okay, great.
Super. Thank you.
Um, I also just wanted to note here that you wanted to express your thanks for the town project and programs managers' time and contribution. I, I think that's, uh, something important to, to recognize. So I appreciate you pointing that out.
Well, we appreciate having fantastic staff help. So, yeah.
Great. Rick, I assume you don't have any comments?
I would just say that, um, along those lines, you know, if we didn't have staff help now, um, you know, notwithstanding, uh, Alisa's Herculean efforts, um, there's no way that we could pull this off, you know, the, uh, the, the project that's going on right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, you know, having somebody who, who not only has a background, but is able to, you know, communicate effectively with everybody else in the building and with vendors. That's really critical.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Well, I guess we're done with you, Alisa. Thanks for.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna hang on quietly for the, uh, energy question that's coming up. So I'll just go back into dormant state here.
All right. Then we're on to action items. Item A.
Okay. All right, you wanna start with that?
Yes, I do.
Hey, Alisa, can you tell me, can you see on the screen share the, uh, first slide?
Yeah, it's FY twenty-five town budget.
Okay, and it's not got all the different frames?
Well, there's an overview tonight, proposed draft budget.
Okay, so she's, all right.
This is what I'm gonna, no extra for you.
Well, yes, stay tuned. Let me, let me just, cause with the, when you're doing the PowerPoint, the, uh, I wanna share the.
The presentation.
Okay, here we go. All right. It, it wouldn't select it earlier. All right. Now is it just the slide?
Just the slide.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. All right. So, um, uh, let's see. So, all right. So I'm, uh, tonight gonna present the, uh, my proposed draft budget. Uh, the, this carries in it the amounts and staffing proposals that, uh, Jenny and I have been receiving over the last, uh, you know, month or so, or in some cases days, or in some cases hours. Uh, department ads, boards, commissions, committees, as well as outside entities like schools and retirement. Uh, under the Town Manager Act, I review the proposed budget, uh, or the, the board reviews the budget that I prepare, makes changes the board deems advisable, and the budget that's presented to, uh, the Finance Committee in town meeting is ultimately what comes out of the board. Um, and actually what goes to the floor of town meeting is what comes out of the Finance Committee process, as you know. Um, the proposed budget does include a couple of staffing changes, other than, uh, I'm carrying an assumed two percent cost of living adjustment for non-union employees, uh, where I'm, uh, recommending, uh, staffing changes. These will be highlighted in the presentation tonight. Uh, this amount does not carry, uh, non-colleage wage adjustments, uh, so step increases. And I'll talk a little bit about more, more about that later. Uh, at the end of tonight's meeting, I'll make a request for the board to refer the proposed FY twenty-five budget to, uh, PIN COME, either with or without changes you may make. Uh, your referral does not equal endorsement. And, uh, since the, uh, next meeting, uh, of the Finance Committee this Thursday is a joint meeting with the Select Board, if you don't wanna refer it tonight, that's fine. We can talk about it more on Thursday. So I don't want anyone to feel like you're up against and having to refer or not refer. Yeah, we'll start the process Thursday with, with the thing out. Uh, so as every year, I start with, uh, just a brief overview of the budget policy direction the board voted in early December. Uh, the proposal was to limit the average single-family tax increase to not more than two and a half percent, not including education and, uh, specifically not including the middle high school project. Uh, clear transparent project process, uh, that calls for a continued drawdown of the school stabilization fund of, to offset the impact of the middle high school. Um, the budget direction did call for a projection of post twenty-five, uh, post FY twenty-five costs. That is not part of tonight's presentation. That is something we're working toward. Uh, with, uh, but we're not, we're not there yet with that, uh, for tonight. Uh, the budget process concurrent with the capital process, uh, consideration of step increases, uh, the board would consider only if in a context of overall, uh, process for personnel evaluations. Um, in parallel with the budget process, the board, uh, should be considering, uh, either capital or expense eligibility for ARPA funding, uh, which is, you know, has to be fully allocated by the end of this calendar year. Uh, the budget policy direction, uh, called for, uh, showing the revised DPW budget structure to reflect that departmental reorganization to account for legal cost offsets, uh, such as, uh, uh, town council costs that may be payable from other sources, whether that's a portable housing trust, LA funds, um, PEG funds as we get, as we look ahead to, uh, renegotiating the cable franchise agreements. Uh, called for talking about, uh, trails maintenance resources, either both as is and what changes would be needed to, in order to uh, measurably change that resource. Uh, account for cost impacts of any unsold new contracts. So as we edit the budget season, both the police dispatch contracts are due to expire at the end of this fiscal year and either one, uh, is, is settled. Um, uh, to consider, continue to consider opportunities to regionalize some services while we're maintaining or enhancing the levels of service for programs and services that generate fees to evaluate the fee structure, ability and sufficiency to either fund or offset, offset operating costs, uh, estimate the impact of new regulatory mandates and, uh, to specify the authorization to expend funds for each section of the operating budget. So the proposed budget that, uh, I'm bringing forward, uh, does not meet the two and a half percent target. It doesn't come close to the two and a half percent target. Uh, so I think we're gonna have some work to do over the next several, you know, weeks or month, month and a half. Um, the bottom line increase is five point six percent, just over a million dollars. The largest drivers of this uh, in dollar amount, uh, the first is education. I put an asterisk there, uh, because we do not have a budget with EER. Uh, so I took the proposed Penn Tucket uh, percentage increase that the Penn Tucket operating budget went up and applied that to WIDIR as just a starting point. And on their, uh, capital amount, I doubled it, which it was a very modest amount. So doubling it wasn't that much money. So that's a big question mark in the education budget. Uh, this number does reflect the reduced Penn Tucket number that we received earlier today.
Mm-hmm.
So that was a, a late change, uh, for the budget. Second one, doll, dollar amount is retirement. And this is just absolutely staggering increase. Uh, and we are having, uh, some back and forth with, with regional to understand this and to, uh, try to get to a satisfactory explanation of it. But, uh, I think it's at, uh, the thirty-five percent year over year, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So that obviously is just an absolutely staggering, uh, in, increase, uh, that was not, uh, in any way accounted for ahead of time. Uh, third largest cost driver is police, hundred and forty-two, five. Part of that, I'll get to this later in the presentation, is, uh, in FY twenty- Part of that, I'll get to this later in the presentation, is, uh, in FY twenty-four, we did not budget for a police cruiser because we didn't need one this year. So fifty-seven thousand dollars of that increase is for a cruiser, so while it's still a significant number, it's important to understand that, um, a significant share of it is, is, uh, replacing the cruiser. The, uh, DPW budget is, uh, showing an increase of about a hundred fourteen thousand dollars. That's driven largely by, um, the, uh, uh, proposed creation of a new union position. Um, but not entirely. There's actually about eighty thousand dollars, well, exactly eighty thousand dollars of additional funding for tree removal, uh, and that's in addition to the article that's separately proposed for ash tree removal, uh, which had come in with an increase of fifty thousand dollars on the tree removal budget. I added another thirty on top of that. He said he could spend, there's basically no limit to what he could spend on tree removal, uh, so that, you know, of that hundred and fourteen thousand dollar increase, eighty of that is comprised by trees. So that's one of the things that you guys will need to chew on and FinCom will need to chew on in the, in the budget process. The, uh, town manager increase is driven almost entirely by, uh, the moving of the projects and programs manager position, which has been budgeted in DPW into the town manager operating budget, so most of that increase is a transfer, uh, actually back to DPW. Some of that increase is also moving costs from, uh, whatever, uh, traditionally been budgeted in park and rec, moving those into DPW facilities, specifically that's, uh, porta potties, um, uh, fertilizer and mulch.
So that DPW increase is after the, I mean, it decreased eighty-eight thousand?
Right, so, so, yeah, budget, a, uh, a position came out, a new position came in that made it not quite a wash, but, but roughly, and so most of the increase is the high hazard, or not the high, the tree removal.
Okay.
And then the, uh, uh, parking rack expenses, so that's, that's most of what comprises that.
And on the retirement, is the reason the increase is so large is because it was too small last year?
Well, that's what we think, uh, but it's, uh,
Basically.
That's what we think.
They, they have yet to admit that.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, there's three emails from you saying, are you sure?
Yes, yes, yeah, no, we, we, it's, it's pretty obvious to us it was because of a mistake last year, but, uh, you know, we are going back and forth with that office, and at some point, uh, you know, we, we do intend to meet with the director there and really, you know, go through in detail, and, um, if we can't get to the point where we can explain this increase in a way that makes any sense, we will expect that they present the increase because it's obviously gonna draw a lot of questions, and we either need to be able to answer those questions in a way that makes sense, or, or they need to answer the questions.
Uh, the email was in the package, kind of a puzzle, where he makes reference to most units will see an increase of two percent, but.
Well, so that, that's, that's something different.
Oh, I thought that was-
No, 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 that's what went out, uh, on, on Friday, that they sent to all units that the numbers they had initially sent out were incorrect to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and I know, but I'm the same, that, that could be, that could conceivably be another couple percent.
That's in there. We got our new assessment today.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, no, we did. We got our new assessment today, so I-
And did it go up?
And it did go up, yeah. Even further, yeah. Which understandably raises questions as to,
Yeah.
You know, how good was, was the earlier number? How good was last year's number?
Right. Well, if you go and look, I don't know what the change is, but if you look at fiscal year twenty-three versus twenty-five and you level it out, it's, it's very clearly they just totally blew it last year.
That is what we think, yeah.
So why not just admit it and move on?
Well, and I think when we, when we find the time to meet and go through it in detail, that, that's kind of what we hope will happen, is to acknowledge that there was an error
Yeah.
last year, and that this is basically, yeah, it's, it's, it's on track with what you would have expected it to be if, if not for last year being so low.
So the question is, are they gonna point, are they gonna accept the error as their own, or are they gonna-
In terms of last year?
Yeah.
Uh, that's, it's, it's a complicated, uh, it's a complicated discussion, so, and and it's, it's at least partly intertwined with a one-eleven-half situation.
Okay.
So, yeah. So I know this is not at a scale that you can read up on the screen. I did do, uh, one-pagers, and, uh, is there one for Casey if she's interested?
Rob, are you on the line?
Oh, I think, I think we printed eight, uh, plus Jenny and I have the complete, you know, a lot of the backup, or not all the backup, but all the more detailed breakdown, so. This, this is just, this is just the budget at the department level, not at the, uh, uh, line item level. All right, so, uh, next slide, uh, bottom line, uh, budget target was two and a half percent. This is showing, uh, five point six percent with actually the non-education budget, you know, unlike prior years, is actually increasing, at least in the current draft, at a greater rate than the education budget, uh, with, you know, the reasons, uh, that I, I outlined, some of which are beyond our control, like retirement, some of which are absolutely within our control, like staffing levels, and that's, that's what you guys will be, uh, really wrestling with in the next, uh, several weeks or, or, uh, probably six weeks. So, we did account for the non-union co-op, uh, at two percent. Uh, we did not account for police and dispatch, but in a subsequent slide, I did, I, we did put in what that amount would be if you just carried a five percentage. Uh, this does carry a new Bohan DPW position, uh, and, uh, it does not carry standard pieces. So bottom line, there's still a good deal of work remains, uh, on these items, uh, to really get this to where it's a, a tighter budget. Uh, a lot of it's good, but there's a few, there's more variables than there are only at this stage of the, uh, the process, uh.
So the new DPW position, that is, was that proposed as part of the restructuring, or is this in addition to?
In addition to, yeah.
Can I ask about the trees budget too?
Mm-hmm.
We've got a warrant article for fifty.
Yeah.
You said it's eighty. It was previously fifty in the base budget.
Yeah.
So you've increased it thirty?
So there was-
At eighty, I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay, so there, um, before this, so in FY twenty-four, there was fifty in the base budget for high house and tree removal.
Yeah.
So that fifty's still there.
Okay.
Butch added fifty to that. I added thirty to that.
So there's an added eighty in the base budget plus fifty in the article?
No, now, everything I just said is not even to do with the article.
Fifty in the budget?
So there's basically now a hundred and thirty
Right.
in the budget and a separate article, so a lot of money to propose for trees.
So they didn't want to put the article into the base budget, cause then it goes even higher. They wanted to sort of separate the two, that's all.
That's right, yeah.
So you have to understand the whole, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot, and I think, yeah.
We were told by Fred two years ago, that just for the ash trees would be like one point two or one point four million over time, so it's not-
And that's just the ash trees, as, as you know, within the rights of way, not on town lands.
And that's just ash trees. There's a lot of other trees out there, and, okay.
Yeah.
But we're not touching the other trees on town land unless they happen to be at a particular area. Lot of them coming down. I see that there is a crew going around, doing work, and- In, outside the road? Well, no, it's trees are coming down. Oh. You see them, that they've come down, and they've got to clean them up. So this a lot of, I mean, you go on, uh, for the Turkey Hill, those aren't, um, ash trees out there, but the whole road is dead. Yeah. Um, I think they're all say increase, but. But, but that's in the right of way. Yeah. Yeah, okay. That's, in itself is kind of- Yeah.
All right. Uh, so I wanted to, uh, be right up front with the proposed staffing changes. There are a couple of significant ones, uh, so first of all, the, uh, as what was before you, the total non-education salary wages expenses are about a little over four million, uh, compared to about three point eight million in FY twenty-four, so about forty-six percent of the non-education operating budget. That's a consistent percentage from last year. Remember, that doesn't yet include the, uh, police and, and dispatch, what, which I probably should have put ahead of this slide, but it's coming soon. Uh, includes, uh, new DPW position. Uh, I am putting forward a proposed restructure of administrative support for what I'm calling mandated building services, which I'm referring to as Inspeccional Services Planning Conservation, uh, CPA. Uh, any, uh, the board approval will be needed for any of these changes, but I wanted to at least preview them with you tonight. Uh, this chart that you see, so basically right now, we, in the currently budgeted positions, we have twenty, a, uh, twenty-hour-a-week benefits eligible position supporting inspeccional services. We have budgeted for six hours a week of planning administrative support with an additional twenty-four hundred dollars a year, uh, for meeting minutes. Uh, we do not have anything in the current budget for support for the conservation department, and we're also carrying, uh, between two and two and three-quarter hours for office coverage in each of three of the finance administration offices. Assessors carry, um, two hours a week over fifty-two weeks, so a hundred and four hours a year as office coverage. Town clerk carries two and three-quarter hour a week, and finance carries two hours a week. So those, basically, so that there's some money in the budget if those offices are, uh, not covered because of sick time, vacation time, conferences, and so forth. Uh, and then we also, it's not in the operating budget, but in the CPA, administrative budget is eight hours a week of a CPA administrator. So, the, uh, proposal that I'm making is to, instead of having a number of part-time and sometimes ultra-part-time budgeted positions, uh, to actually have a full-time forty-hour-a-week, uh, support position to support all of the land use and building, uh, departments. So that would be a significant change in terms of the staff structure, um, uh, and, you know, that would rely on, uh, in terms of the CPA, that would rely on the Community Preservation Committee wanting to opt in with that. But for the others, I see a real benefit to having a full-time support position for those offices, which are right now will either have zero support, like conservation, or, uh, part-time support that doesn't align with the hours of operation of the rest of the building. Uh, I think having a single full-time position that is, uh, supporting several, you know, name primarily inspeccional services, planning, conservation, uh, would be a real benefit to those, uh, departments, as well as to the public in terms of customer service. Uh, so this is a significant proposal, and, uh, you can, you know, definitely chew on it more in a subsequent meeting, but I wanted to get it onto your, uh, you know, kind of clearly put it out there as part of my initial budget presentation.
So it looks like if you add all the time that's in there currently, and conservation has zero, it adds up to fifty-two and quarter or three-quarters, I can't, it was fifty-two and three-quarters hours currently. I think you have all those up?
Yeah, I don't think CPA needs eight hours. I know that's what makes budgeted.
Right.
Probably eight hours a month is more usual than that.
Yeah, which is, as, as we've talked about, tough to have a standalone position because it's so, uh, cyclical.
Yeah.
Uh, so that would be, I think, a benefit to have some dedicated support for that, but where someone's not, you know, either, uh, not having work to do or not coming to work, cause there's no work to do, right? So yeah, it's, it's a big proposal, uh, you know, I have met with the effective staff person and, and set this out, uh, so that's, uh, you know, it's, but uh, I think this proposal would be very responsive to some very real needs and, uh, and some of those departments, and, uh.
Any feedback from the departments, the boards and committees that-
Well, I know conservation and planning are very much counting on this budget to provide them a sufficient level of support, which, which right now they do not have. Neither of those departments have sufficient support in hand. Conservation doesn't have any.
Okay.
And, and there should be good synergy with those, you know, the single person, a single person covering all the departments in this.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's synergies now that have developed because you have the, the regular periodic meetings.
Right.
That gets together, and so that, that whole thing is really complementary to that.
Right.
From a functional standpoint.
And I think that the logic of bringing the kind of office coverage in the administration offices is if we now have a full-time support position to, you know, in addition to those that we already have in finance and town clerk, um, and more than half-time in assessing, at that point, there's enough people in the mix that if someone's out at a conference, or let's say Jim and Max are both out at a parts conference, you know, I, I think we could cross-train this person to where we wouldn't, in my opinion, need to carry these small amounts of, um, you know, budgeted funds for as-needed support, because we could more have people cover different desks based on, uh, you know, if someone's out, out sick or out on vacation or at a conference. Uh, so, continue on salary wage budgeting. Uh, I just wanted to give you a kind of a, a sense of, you know, I've said a couple of times, there's no steps carried in here, so I want to let you know dollar-wise, uh, what those would translate to if there were, uh, something where step increases proposed, uh, to the dollars up on the screen, that the, the cost varies depending on, uh, the grade, which is to be expected, uh, the, the higher grade positions, uh, at a higher hourly rate, so the cost of a step at a grade D is about, you know, a little, uh, it's like twenty-six, sixty-two a year, and that's a consistent number, whether it's going from step one to two, or step nine to ten. It varies by ten or twelve bucks, but, but what it is, I took the average and the, the max, and they were never more than twenty dollars apart, so these numbers are the highest. So for budgeting purposes, this gives you an idea of what a step would cost, uh. So at a future meeting, I'd like the board to consider whether there is an amount of non-coa step increases it would support, if any. I certainly recognize that this is, uh, you know, shaping up to be a very difficult budget year, and so I think that's something that, you know, warrants a, a standalone conversation once you've had time to digest the overall context of the budget, uh, I didn't want to bring forward, uh, something like that until you had a sense of, of the other cost drivers.
So would, at some point, you'll have a, a proposed amount, what you would wish to?
Yeah, yeah, we're still, we're, we're in the, uh, you know, last stages of finishing up the per- uh, performance evals, so until those are all done, uh, can't really do that, but, uh, but yeah, I, I will have a, a good idea of what, what I would like to see, uh, but. So, now I'm gonna go into each section of the budget, and you have the summaries in front of you. The, the color coding on the right is, uh, uh, you know, a darker increase for, uh, a larger or a darker, darker color that signify a greater, uh, increase, and that is that percentage that you see, so on the right, the eight point eight percent. What that means is that that, uh, department's contribution to the overall million-dollar bottom-line budget increase is about eight point eight percent. So it's not relative to the, that line, it's relative to the overall bottom line, which I thought would be helpful to just understand what's driving.
That's those, the schools, three hundred thousand, and accounts for twenty-nine percent of the million dollars, and it's-
Yeah.
Worked out.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So, uh, so, a couple of observations here, as I mentioned earlier, the town manager budget does carry, uh, programs, so projects manager position, which is currently carried in DPW. Uh, the finance department budget, um, you know, showing a, you know, eleven point seven percent, uh, increase. Uh, the thirty-eight thousand dollars is largely driven by additional software costs, namely for the, uh, clear gov, um. We were, uh, with the audit, we thought that we were at the third of three years. We're actually at the second of three years, and our contract with our auditor, um, provides for just a one thousand dollar increase for next year, so that's all that's carried in there. Uh, we have been kind of buckling in our seatbelt for potentially a big increase, because there's a lot of consolidation going on right now among the auditing firms, and we know that some towns that are comparable to us are paying, uh, probably fifty percent more than we are for audit, so that's something for next year to be aware of, but for this year, we, um, had a very modest increase there. And, uh, I am proposing this, something, you know, Rob and his committee will obviously dig into all of this, but in the current FY twenty-four, they had, uh, uh, carried forty thousand for the reserve fund instead of the traditional sixty. I figure I split the difference, go to fifty, that's something we can talk about, uh, but that's, that's what that ten thousand dollar increase is in the finance committee, uh, line. Anything else jumping up? Anything else jumping off the page here before I go on to the next page?
So the FY twenty-five proposed. And how's the next two columns different than that? So for instance?
Oh, oh, that's the change.
That's the increase.
Yeah.
Mine wants the increase.
Right, yeah, so the dollar increase and the percentage increase.
Okay.
I mean, as I'm looking at the overall department budget, just three numbers that are driving, it's pretty simple, everything else is pretty modest. You've got the police, their education, and Essex County retirement, other than that, but, and Essex County was stuck with it.
Yeah.
The schools, you can't fault them at three percent this year.
Yeah.
And the police is where it's, this is a brutal one to have to, you can't go cutting. These other budgets that are already reasonable.
Well, I, I appreciate you saying, but, and I do, I, I really do, but obviously we. Look to every dollar, you know, we really try to look, you know, so we want to make sure that, that any increase, even if it's. You know, in the realm of. Just normal inflation is, is that there's a reason behind it. So for instance, like with Fink home. Most of that's driven by the, the land stewards, which are now carried in the operating budget rather than as a separate article, so.
But all I'm saying is in the big numbers, which.
Yeah.
People are gonna.
Yeah.
Glom onto.
Yep.
That's, well, probably seventy percent of right there.
Yeah, that's right.
If you eliminate any of those, drop that five percent.
Yeah.
Five point six down, exactly what you need it to be.
Yeah.
But that's almost impossible to do.
No, no, it's. So in the public safety, the biggest one is, yeah, the fifty-seven thousand for police cruiser. The estimated cost for a cruiser is more like sixty-seven, but there's a current balance of about ten thousand six hundred in the police revolving fund. So the idea was to drop ten thousand from that into budget fifty-seven thousand. That is an amount based on a hybrid, which is a couple of thousand more than a regular. The decision of what specific cruiser to purchase has not been made, but we wanted a budget for the higher number. To preserve the option.
And so will that be part of the budget next fiscal year?
Cruiser?
Yeah.
So they've got five and there's, there's a couple of, I mean, that's a great thing to go into when we get into, you know, with Chief Dwyer here. For a while, it was a cruiser every single year, then last year they didn't because he, he, you know. Thought they didn't need to replace one in the current budget year. It's just about every year, but there's a couple of dynamics now in addition to the normal ones, really to do with the hybrid cruisers. Because they're still getting a handle on whether those will last longer because there's less wear and tear on the engine. Because of all the idle time, they're basically not, you know, deteriorating. There have been some significant performance issues with the hybrids. So that's something that we'll talk about when we get into the deeper dive, and I think Dwyer's talked to you a little bit about that. Where they just stop.
Yeah, that's bad.
Stop, which is not good, so that's happened a number of times, so.
It just, it almost seems like it'd be better to put a set amount away every year for cruisers and buy them as needed, you know.
Excuse me, Wendy, at that point, why are cruisers not part of capital pools anymore?
So you asked that very question of Elisa Grammer in twenty sixteen, I can share you the minutes with, so, so, no.
I mean, we have a.
I'm making a joke.
Yeah, yeah.
I researched about this, so. So the, we haven't found, the clearest, I'll tell you two things. They haven't been since at least twenty sixteen, probably longer. The best. Reason that I've been able to come up with in looking at a bunch of meeting minutes. Is that the useful life of a cruiser doesn't tend to be more than five years. So, but whether they should be considered a capital item or not is something that, that, they haven't been for, you know, a decade.
But they, but they used to be, and then there, there was this thing that went on between the public and the people presenting the budget at town meetings. Arguing about cruisers because people wanted to not buy a cruiser when it's coming forward. I would just. Suggest. That cruisers are capital items that last five years, we pay attention to them and they should be part of the overall construct. Of the capital cruisers, because then, then you can also get into. Making sure you're funding it for it regularly, whether you're buying it or not, funding for it because it's planned at some future date, I just.
I think it looks better than having a fifty-seven thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, right. This budget, it's not reasonable.
And, and what I'm, what I'm reacquinging is. That, that, you know, as you go through anything. Past practice might not have been the best practice. And so if we want to tighten up capital improvements process, you know, and, and we have, we have a good process, but. It, it, it's confusing to have stuff that. In most people's minds should be a capital item, also appear in the operating, then they wonder about what else is in the operating that should be a capital, that's all. Just consistency in the right way is more desirable than consistency in the wrong way.
I, I was really kind of pushing that, but then last time we talked about increasing the, the benchmark for capital, so then this would become moot anyway, right?
Depends on what it was increased.
Yeah. We were talking for fifty thousand or more, right, so. Yeah.
So one thing, just as a point of, as a non sequitur is. When it was built into the operating budget. The, the then FinCom and their transmitter letter for that year's FinCom booklet. Gave themselves a big pat on the back for having done that. Saying that it was more transparent than it was in the operating budget, so I just, I'm just saying.
There's a lot of history.
Yeah, so, so, and, but I'm happy to share, we got all the minutes.
You know, I think you're better off making a decision of what to do going forward based upon, you know, I wouldn't judge it based upon other people's feelings regarding the house.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just saying. You might want to. It's just good to have knowledge, that's all.
So not necessarily relevant to. The budget and strategy or policy about the budget, but there's probably grammally available, something like, not, not a huge amount, but probably five thousand dollars.
For EBs, yes.
Well, and for hybrids.
Yeah, and for hybrids, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we might want to take that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's, that's worked out a lot of number, number of times. So I didn't care the police dispatch, collective bargaining increases, however, we did run numbers on. If you apply just a, a flat percentage to what the total. Union compensation is, so that includes, you know, wages. incentives, longevity, education, everything, the all-in number. For dispatch and police combined, you know, you see the number nineteen-five, two percent, twenty-nine-two, three percent. You know, so roughly ten thousand percent, so that's something that we can take offline and, you know, in the context of collective bargaining. But thi- this is an issue every. Every cycle where we have contracts that aren't settled at the time the budget review is going forward because you want to. Make sure you're budgeting in an honest way with the public in terms of what it's actually going to cost. But without actually tipping your hands in the collective bargaining process. So we can, we can talk about that further, but in terms of orders of magnitude. You know, even at three percent, you're talking about a roughly, you know, less than thirty thousand dollar increase for the bottom line, so it, it's not, it's. It's not diminishing the amount, but it's. If you wanted to adjust like the bottom line increase of five point six in the overall budget and add thirty grand, you know, that'd be about. You know.
And in terms of COA for non-union staff?
That's all built in at two percent.
It is.
It is built in, yeah. Including for public safety for some, yeah. So those are, so the, to my, to the best of our knowledge. The only non, the only variables on the wages are either steps and the collective bargaining and, and these are the. You know, at these percentages, you, you might say something different. Education, yeah, as Chris mentioned, this is, you know, about a third, just about thirty percent of the overall bottom line increase. We did get notice from Kentucky earlier today regarding a decrease. It's not a decrease in the budget, it's a decrease in what they originally proposed. So the bound budget book is no longer a reliable. Reference in terms of the, the proposed number. I wasn't totally shocked at that, I expected they were going to say something like that tomorrow night, I didn't know we would get something today. But we, we were aware that the initial proposal they brought forward was not being well-received. And we knew they were looking to sharpen their pencil for their budget hearing.
So do you know where they sharpened their pencil?
No, I just got the number today, it, I didn't, it didn't come with any backup, but I'm sure we'll hear about that in detail.
Right.
So, and it does look, by the way, that, well, Kentucky's already closed for tomorrow.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, they, with the storm, so. Their budget's hearing is scheduled for tomorrow, will take place two weeks from tomorrow, I believe.
Twenty hours, two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. And as I said earlier, we haven't got any whittier yet, so I've made some assumptions. I doubt they're conservative, I, I don't think they're like wildly optimistic, but they're not. I didn't like grab the numbers too much, so. And then Essex Ag, I did speak with Marie Zamorowski last week, she's our contact there in the business office and. As every year, their tuition is not set until April by Desi, but she does give us kind of. What she would recommend carrying, and so I, I did incorporate that. In general, those have been pretty good projections, sometimes it's a little, a little higher, a little low, but. In terms of enrollment, as you know, the current year budget was amended in the fall to account for two additional students, up to four. At this point, we have reason to expect that there will be four, again. Public Works, the major changes here are what I've already talked about with the Programs and Projects Manager as well as the new union position. I just want, and this is, this is something I will obviously get a great deal of focus at one of the. Dedicated budget meetings, but just for starting points. I, I am saying this would restore staffing because prior to the recession in roughly two thousand nine, two thousand ten era. At that point, they had gone from four down to three, so they have actually been at four. Historically, but not for about fifteen years, so there's. A proposal to go from three to four. And my goal in bringing this forward is to both increase the bandwidth for their existing workload, because they're extremely strapped. Improve compliance with workplace safety in terms of jobs that OSHA would say, oh, I have two people, sometimes are. Only being done by one person. And then also to expand capacity to be more responsive on trails and open space issues, so. We'll go into this in a lot more detail when we get into the budget workshop, but. That's, that's it in a nutshell. Human Services, nothing remarkable going on here, the, the significant increase on, on health is driven by. You know, the solid waste, that's per contract, the hauling. And then Recreation, the significant decrease that you're seeing, there isn't really a decrease, it's more, it is actually a decrease. But it's not, not as much of a decrease, we did trim a bit. From what they had carried. And the backup shows all the detail on that, but it's some of those costs for primarily porta-potties. Mulch and fertilizer, I mean, carrying VPW facilities budget.
Any staffing costs?
We wanted to, but we didn't, it's partly because with the ClearGov, like, once you get it set up this way. To redo it, it's, so basically. The, the spirit, so there's about fifty-five hundred dollars of, I think fifty, somewhere between. Between five and six thousand dollars of seasonal labor in park and rec. Our objective would be to get that into Public Works, but we didn't do that here. So what we would do is, we looked at this as kind of a transition year that the facilities manager, Brian Richard, would be. Overseeing those staff, signing their time sheets, directing their work. But from a budgeting standpoint, we didn't get it over, we, we probably still could, we just couldn't by today.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, partly because of the. You know, it's. There's always. Because of the building outfit, the budgeting software, so. That's, I want to just stay on this slide for one.
Can I ask one question?
I like this slide.
Parking rec before you move on. So the staffing, in addition to the, the temporary summer positions, did we also discuss allocating some of Caitlin and?
We, we did, and we haven't done that, and it wouldn't, I, we could do that, we could definitely do that, you know, we just, we haven't. And I have, I have numbers, I just haven't done it, but yeah, I can.
I was just curious if that's before.
No, I think it's well warranted.
Oh, absolutely.
It just, it's a matter of finding the time to, to really. We have a ton of data, but the idea Wendy is, is referencing is that. Where our town staff have taken on significantly greater responsibilities and putting in significantly more time. Towards supporting park and rec operations through both the MyRec platform. Through purchasing, managing insurance, a lot of administrative aspects of. Both summer rec and field use reservations. That, you know, those costs, those labor costs are still being borne in Public Works, or in some cases in Finance. And so we did work with the involved staff over, back in the fall and had each of them. Estimate how many hours they spend over the course of a typical week, month, year. On those rec functions and it adds up, it adds up to a pretty significant amount and you apply it against their. Their pay rate, so the thought was since. Rec. Generates non-tax revenues through summer rec fees as well as field use reservations. Then you could definitely justify allocating some portion of those costs to those non-tax. Things, so, yeah, we, we can, we, we do have a lot of numbers in that, but I, I didn't. Roll it into the budget.
All right, so now we'll pile on this slide.
Debt service.
That's the one that is be the, that's the worst, that's the sleeping bear when it awakens.
Yeah.
You're gonna want to get rid of that, so. No, that's what we have to understand, that we don't have the debt service and we're going to get back to that and then we've already dealt with troublesome numbers, so.
Yes.
That, I just don't like that one.
Yeah, I don't either, it's, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's such an aberration, it's not going to be that way.
It feels good now, but it might not later.
Right, right. And then benefits and transfers, obviously a big one here, Essex Retirement. So you'll note the four hundred thousand in stabilization, that's not a typo, Jim, okay? Jim, no, Jim, I didn't, it's. So if that shows, and this is the same way it was presented in the budget as voted. Last year, six hundred from, from the operating budget into stabilization. Two hundred thousand from school stabilization to offset the operating budget, and you'll remember. That we did that in the operating budget because that allows us to budget the actual. Middle high school debt service in the operating budget rather than in the prior couple of years. We had actually amended the budget. By the same amount that was transferred in from school stabilization. The problem with doing that is over the years, it doesn't give you a true expense number. So by doing this, it gives you a, you know, a true expense number. Offset by a contribution, so that's something, whether two hundred thousand is the right amount, that's something you, you all will need to dig into with FinCom. And I added a note, you should, in addition to giving careful consideration of both of those. I really think you ought to at least consider on the pension liability stabilization, right now we have a warrant article of money in the stabilization. Given the amount of the increase. It would be within your, you know, you could ask town meeting to draw from pension stabilization. To offset this increase, that would cause you'd have to, cause someone to have to rejigger the, the model.
Where's, where's the six hundred?
Well, it's, this four hundred is comprised of six hundred out, two hundred in. So this is just the, the department number, this isn't the, the breakdown of the numbers, but. It's a net number.
So do you have a, like a benchmark of. A certain dollar amount, what that would translate to as a percent of the budget increase? Do you know what I mean, like to reduce the budget by one percent, how, how many dollars?
How many dollars, how many dollars? In other words, talking about free cash and stabilizations, but in fact, we're.
Yeah, I'm thinking like, what if instead of making this part of the budget, we use free cash to put into stabilization this year, you know, would that make an appreciable amount?
It would, yeah, yeah, we could, we can do that with our recap model very effectively.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's ultimately what the question is going to be.
Right.
Like, like you're questioning us of, of using free cash, there's several different ways to use free cash.
Okay.
One, did you go direct against the tax rate?
Yeah.
Or you can.
Take something out of the budget.
Put, put more interest. Put put more into stabilization and also draw more out of stabilization. Do you like to put it in, take it out?
It's also nice to keep that there for when we do have debt. Then we can make that change and it won't feel so bad.
So free cash is two point three. Yes, yeah. So a couple of, so I mean, I touched on this, but yeah, I did carry two hundred thousand, that's the starting point. Same as, same as last year, so that negative two hundred thousand offsets the six hundred out, as I said.
And we're almost, when when is the school stabilization, is it twenty six?
Last year at this time, we were saying if you did three hundred, whatever the amount was, that it would support twenty four and twenty five and then be just about out. I think with two hundred thousand, there's probably another two years ahead of us, two hundred thousand, but we we have, if Jenny doesn't have
Six hundred forty five.
Okay, so two, we could, at two hundred thousand, we could do roughly two more years.
And just the the question just doesn't go to free cash, it also goes to general savings. So it's, you know, those both should be in.
What do you know? So this is similar slide you've seen every every year, so I won't belabor it, but you know, it is central issue, and that's my estimating bottom line taxpayer impact. You know, I I don't know how much stock we want to put in the Department of Revenue recommendation, but five percent of the operating budget that's proposed is about forty six thousand, or almost two point four million. Some amount of turnbacks are are typical, whether through a conservative budgeting, periods of short staffing. Fall is often when you consider a free cash transfer after the current fiscal year is closed out. I do rather consider that during the budget process, doesn't mean you need to do it, but it should be part of the conversation. And whether you, whether you want to do it in the spring or the fall at all, it's just something that you you want to think about. So for instance, like with eighty thousand dollar increase in the DPW line for tree removal on top of the fifty that was already in there, you might say, let's take that eighty thousand from free cash and you know, so so you might, you might think about it in a way of offsetting specific increases rather than
So so in in that case, fifty thousand dollars could instead be a fifty thousand dollar article for trees. Could instead be one thirty.
Could be one thirty, and then you take eighty grand out of the operating.
That's a better way, then it doesn't get baked into the operating budget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So and I'll send around these slides so you can look at the the numbers, but this is a chart we've been updating every year for the last several years in the FinCom booklet. And as you know, in the current F twenty four, there was a zero transfer for free cash.
Which Lisa Grimmer thanked the Select Board and Town Manager Board at the Capital Partners Committee.
And Lisa is still on, so I choose my words carefully, but if she, if she had watched the meeting, she would have thanked you, but probably not. Alright, Capital had their first meeting last week, they have another meeting Thursday, February twenty ninth. I I did carry a six hundred thousand dollar transfer into stabilization. I definitely think we don't want to go below that number.
Yeah, for sure. So I had a question on that. I was surprised that the February twenty ninth is the next meeting. I mean, if they're going in tandem, isn't that gonna be too late for FinCom review?
It it definitely, I think, two, two things to think about. One is there's only what I think two meetings. There's three meetings in March, but the third one was hoped for to be like a loose end, but I think there's plenty of time, but the other thing I think that, you know, Rob's committee needs to think about is I certainly understand your, 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 the rationale of deciding to not take out capital articles till after CIC reports. But you don't have to do that. There's nothing saying that FinCom can't recommend it.
We can look at it. And wait. I mean, we, yeah, right.
Yeah, but I mean, there's nineteen or arguably twenty three capital articles, so holding off on all of those you know, to March, I I don't know.
And some of them, I mean, a lot, yeah. So we should just whatever the best, like we said before, there's things that are ready right now. Right now. Let's do all the soup right now. There's gonna be stuff that, no matter what anybody does, it's gonna run late.
That's right.
Like in school and and all that, so let's, if if you're ready for something and and both of you Town Manager and Select Board have kind of said this sounds good to us, let's let's proceed as if it's gonna remain that way.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if if a department is here with their budget, ideally they have their articles at the same time, and if we're waiting till the end for capital, it's not as easy.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, you know, Rob and I were in touch a little bit toward the end of last week. I think the scheduling of the FinCom meetings is is gonna be particularly complex this year, due partly to the number of warrant articles and due partly to the the number of budget questions, but you know, there's not a huge number of questions, but there's some very meaningful questions, so.
Right. In fact, the more meaningful questions are are ones we've just discussed about the use of free cash and stabilization and stuff like that.
And 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 some of the non cola, you know.
Some of them, but but I mean.
Those aren't huge dollar things, but but from a management standpoint, they couldn't be much bigger in terms of, you know.
Morality.
Yeah, yeah, so. Alright, so this is a a chart you've seen in the past, so I, and I'll send around the slides. But this just shows the the various trends, free cash, stabilization, water retained earnings, water stabilization, school stabilization over the last what's that, eight years? And and the line chart we've seen before as well, that that kind of illustrates which are trending up and which are trending down.
That's interesting demand on stabilization this year is gonna be pretty
Yeah, that's for sure. So process from here, you can either refer this out tonight, or or since you're just hearing this for the first time, and we will be working for Thursday's meeting to put together the backup, although, you know, I'll talk to Rob tomorrow about kind of what will what we can realistically get on Thursday. I don't, I hadn't intended that we get into specific departments Thursday, we normally would at the first meeting, but where you know, it's just a couple of days. We've talked about that.
Yeah, I'm gonna be inclined to go with your lead.
There's certainly enough to chew on between the budget and the articles. I mean, there's an enormous amount that the the Thursday can be a very productive meeting, but in terms of, especially where some of the departmental budgets, basically if there's any budgeted wages in there.
It could change, yeah.
Exactly, so. So we've, you've got joint meetings this Thursday and also we have tomorrow, next Tuesday, so I think that's a time to kind of really look at some of these numbers. And the schedule will review each section of the budget, and we will be working to put together an overall schedule like we have in the past. And, you know, at some point, we'll have a joint meeting with the Select Board, Moderator, Town Council to preview town meeting. I would think that would want to be definitely significantly further ahead of town meeting than it was in the fall, or it was just a week prior. In part for the reasons that Jim mentioned earlier, location logistics and the deadline, postal warrants is Monday, April fifteenth.
So in in previous budgets, you've had what the department had requested and what you recommended. Or so these numbers are your recommendations, not the department.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, we do have all that within the ClearGov. What what happened really is so we've been kind of fully going with the ClearGov, and then it wasn't until really over the weekend that I put here's now because it's familiar, it's what people have seen, and and we've honestly been first of all, I mean, we're getting changing numbers right up until today from Kentucky, from Essex, I mean, it's just it it's very difficult. And the other thing is, there's the ClearGov, there's the operational budget module and the personnel budget module, two different things. And we have never, since this is our first year with it, we've never our assumption is that once we approve the personnel budgeting, it then subsumes those numbers into the overall operate, but we haven't actually done that. And because there's some questions on wage budgeting, we've been very hesitant to like pull the trigger on that and potentially see that come in and overwrite numbers. So instead, what we did is we overwrote in ClearGov the numbers that we, you know, were good numbers, but to do it manually, just because we haven't, we haven't synced those two up, and if we do it, we don't want to be in a position where we can't then go in and tweak it. So we're still kind of on the learning curve with that. And so, yeah, I I decided to put it all into the Excel, and I didn't populate all the normal Excel columns of like year to date and department head request, because that's all in ClearGov. So we're still kind of doing, we're now kind of doing that. Yeah, yeah, so but I thought for presentation purposes for tonight, it would be something familiar. What you don't see is, you know, and you haven't you know, you will see, you know, once, but but some of the like multi-year things ClearGov can provide where we've got to just honestly spend like a number of hours together, which, you know, we're likely to have five minutes together with everything else going on, so.
But you can see where it will be beneficial down the road, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, yeah, once, once we get a little more comfortable with it, I think we can.
Yeah, I mean, I think once we've, once we've like been through the whole, it's very powerful, it's very detailed. And I think one thing it's done really well, I think, with the departments submitting it, those who chose to do it. A number of departments chose not to, they sent it to us, and we keyed it in, but that worked fine too. I think that interface is really good, and you can add comments, you can add notes, you can attach attachments, and it's all through the cloud. So I think that's worked really, really well. And and so, for instance, let's say for a section of the budget, like the Town Manager section, I am the requester, but I'm also the the editor, so Jenny and I both are the editors, so when when a department had, like Jim puts in his Requester budget, it then shows up in our system as having been submitted, we can then either approve it as submitted, modify it, reject it. So once we, you know, once we finally hit print on the whole budget, it's gonna preserve each of those, and you'll be able to see that audit trail. But because we didn't do that for tonight, we we don't actually know exactly how that's gonna work.
Yeah.
So.
Questions, Chris?
Right, right now, no. Are we gonna refer it tonight if you wait? I don't know if there's any significant difference, does it matter?
I don't, I mean, I don't think so, it's because it's just a formality, and yeah, you you all can, yeah, you you can, you know, what I said earlier, you know, you referring it doesn't mean you recommend it. I mean, some of these things you're just hearing about for the first time, or at least formally for the first time.
Since we go through that joint process, clearly, whether we do tonight, can commit you, because that's where you're gonna find out whether you like it or not.
Yeah, that's when you'll get, you know, just as you have in the past years, you'll get every section, the backups, the departments, and then all, you know, different you know, contractual obligations to different things. That's all part of the backup to help, you know, give you context for the numbers.
So procedurally, is it more advantageous to refer tonight, or?
I think so, yeah.
I'll make a motion for a budget. Presented.
Sure, I guess now we understand it in detail.
You do?
Further discussion? So how does this compare to past year's budgets in terms of the amount of work? I mean, there are quite a few things changing in this. You know, staffing structure and.
Yeah, I think, I think the, it's been extraordinarily, it's every year budget's extremely difficult. I think the most difficult things this year have been all of the non-budget things that have prevented us from having the time that we would like to have. So within the budget, if you're just looking at the budget, like what's been difficult or different about that, the DPW restructure is complicated because, I mean, just within the Excel, you know, format that you saw, it's showing the same account structure, but the actual account structure is different. So maybe a couple of examples of that. So for, so for like expenses right now, it's presented as a single aggregate number. But what's in the ClearGov is there's highway expenses, there's facilities expenses, there's administrative expenses. Each of those are a different line. I decided for presentation, just because if you put it in a different line, then someone's saying, wait, this is going to zero. And it's like, no, no, it's, it's, there's new lines down here. So from an accounting standpoint, that's you know, and doing it both in Excel and ClearGov is definitely, you know, that that.
Yeah, building out ClearGov has been very time consuming.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Jenny's probably put in hundreds of hours, it certainly seems. Yeah.
But in the, once it's built out, then it should make things.
It's just this one year, that's, yeah, the investment. Hopefully worth it.
Yeah, and part of the buildout is we we backloaded four years of prior budget in an actual. So that's where like, when we do, when we start pressing that, we've got great data to show trends and and we can do forecasts and
So when when you want to look at next years, where next year fits in the trend it hasn't four years prior?
That's right.
To 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 show you where that is.
That's right, yeah. All of which, as I've said before, you can do in Excel, but it takes time, and time is what we're always up against. You know, for towns that have like a budget director who that's all they do, they they do those things, but for for small towns like us, having a software that can do those kind of projections and forecasts with with less manual work is definitely enticing.
Okay. I have to see. Consideration of whether to direct ARPA funding requests for one more spending articles.
So I I really, I wanted to start, you know, kind of, I guess, resume the conversation you had in front of you about the current balance of unencumbered ARPA funds. And we didn't put together any specific ARPA requests. I really wanted to have the board say, as you look at the universe of funding articles on the spring meeting, do you have any interest in seeing some of those potentially brought back as ARPA requests, which therefore can have them come off the warrant altogether? There's a couple of potential advantages of that. One is the certainty of getting the funds, you know, spent on the timeline they have to be spent for the for the beds. And secondly, it would be one fewer, or maybe several fewer warrant articles, and therefore fewer, less meeting time, less reviews and reports, so. I do know, I mean, you comfortable sharing your recommendation on the ARPA funds? In terms of, yeah, in terms of
Which ones?
Well, not with not with specific articles, but just gen, more generally, like looking at just the number of spending articles on the town meeting.
Can I ask a question to back up on the ARPA? On the Church and Prospect Street, the six twenty five, we talked about, whereas the contract had been produced significantly to go in the Water Department and parate that contribution, so what was the discussion on that? And what kind of, no, probably nothing has happened.
Nothing has happened, no. So, I mean, right now they haven't approved amount, so unless they came in and asked for a change, which they wouldn't, you would, you would need to tell them, hey, I know we voted this and made a commitment, but we're we're changing that now, so.
It was brought up at the last Board, Board of Work Commissioners meeting that I guess it was the last meeting. I did bring that up, of course, following, you know, your your suggestion, and we thought we didn't there was no conclusion. there was no conclusion. Um, and, and I guess if we want to push the issue, they, you know, they and put on notice that we think it's something worth, they're giving consideration. Um, do we want to propose a number?
I would do a comparison to what the original number was to the reduced based on the contractual price. And I think that's fair and appropriate, to be honest. And I don't know if they have any expectation of that, or they're expecting to keep it that way and reduce the number on their end.
So when we discussed this at the meeting, we did not come to a conclusion?
No.
Rick was going to be speaking to the, the meeting.
Okay.
Right, and, and, you know, it was, uh.
I mean, of course they're not.
Right, right, exactly. As you would imagine, it wasn't, um, it wasn't received with open wounds, the suggestion. And, but, you know, it also was not definitive of what we were thinking was appropriate. Now, I, I hear what you're saying right now, and I guess, you know, I didn't allude to, I didn't say that specifically, but I, you know, said we, numbers are less than expected. So maybe it would make sense.
I don't know how it impacts their timing with their bonding and everything else.
The, the bonding, uh, it, it, so what, yeah, what it is, is the the amount that they need to borrow, um, translates to, to what Hilltop will estimate as their next year's debt service, which, which then ties in with the rate here. So the actual borrowing, it doesn't really affect that, but they do have to help. They do have to know how much they're, they're intending to borrow.
So, you know, from a whole park standpoint, um.
Went from like, I'm guessing, like, twenty-eight to one point eight million, right? You'd have to do the math on that. It's close to a third.
Yes, roughly, yeah, a little bit, uh, a little bit more than a third decrease, um, which would put it then down.
Again, so that, that goes down to four hundred, it gives you two, another two hundred thousand used on our town meeting. That's all I'm just thinking with that scenario again.
Yeah, I think we should pursue that. I mean, the ARPA, the way we came up with that number was specifically to cover the cost of the pipe. So, um, I think it's a fair.
And based on putting the, the purchase of materials in with the contraction thing, it drove the whole number down. So they got the double benefit of the ARPA and the cost savings. So.
So it's not really up to the Board of Water Commissioners to decide this, right?
Well, I think they have to give them fair notice of discussion.
We did. So maybe, do I bring it up again? August is not on their agenda, or are they meeting Wednesday?
Yeah, ARPA funding sure are not specifically. I don't recall exactly what the, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I would bring it up at that meeting, cause that's clearly a debate, which is about the budget and race.
Yeah. On the other hand, if it's, if it's, if it's going to be a change, it definitely relates to the rates.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, there's a, yeah, it's, um, it's a perfect solution because I, I understand that they're enjoying the benefit of the, um, of the bid having been lower and, and that will impact, you know, their, their net cost. You know, that, that's some point you have to wonder about. You know, are we, are we true to our word? You know, how, how do we define what was, I mean, we defined it around now, but we didn't define it as a percentage.
I know, they, they expected to pay two point eight million on the whole thing. I'm going to give six hundred.
We were going to pay for the pipe, it was a specific item.
Right, so that would have put their total exposure on two point two million.
Yeah.
But yet the total bid came in at one point eight, less the six, they're at one point two, they're a million bucks on that.
Yeah.
So to, if you'd known that at the time, you would not have made the full six hundred.
Right, right.
That's what I'm saying, you were trying to give them some relief, so that the rate users weren't taking the full burden.
All right, well, what, what other potential articles could we want, what?
Jenny was coming up with some comment.
Oh, no, I, I would just concentrate on, um, anything coming from state looking.
Well, and I think you were saying also that, uh, like tangible items that can be purchased, because that's kind of, there's a certainty that the money is, is out, as opposed to like versus with the Middle Street Bridge, where if that project was not under contract by December thirty-first of this year, that would be a real problem. Now, it's been discussed that, that there could be a change in November, you know, signing a contract for a, a major item to encumber all the funds. So that, that's an option too. We just want to make sure we're on the same page. Since the funds are a hundred percent under the board's authority, so.
They have to be expended by December?
They have to be committed by December thirty-first, expended two years later.
See, cause we mentioned earlier, you could theoretically go up by your water pump or fire. But once you do that, you've depleted the account. So between now and December, if someone with even surprise comes up, it'd be nice to have that cushion there just for. Seems like we had a lot of surprises, you know, from the, the page AC to the, the roof to whatever. So it's been very nice to have the ability to sit there and not get in line, wait for town meeting and just be able to react. So I would say, I don't think you want to use up the whole fund.
Yeah, I, I'd kind of like to save.
A significant portion.
Yeah, significant portion, but till, till some date that still gives us time to respond, to make sure we spend the money.
And what would that date be, Jenny? What would you be comfortable with?
Uh, I guess it really is dependent on what we're talking about, how quickly it can be committed to contract or purchase agreement.
So, so we can see, what's, what's the number for? So, you, you know, there's going to be a capital request or stabilization request. Um, I expect it will be from stabilization for a dump truck. Which is up to like three fifty, three years to go there. Um, you know, that's the kind of thing where at town meeting in the fall, special town meeting in the fall, we could, if, 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 if it was clear that it wasn't going to be used for the bridge, we could make any decision that need to be made. And, and town meeting doesn't need to be involved in the decision for ARPA funds, but if we wanted to, um, I don't know what we would have to do actually. We just wouldn't use the money that was allocated for stabilization. Um, and, and could instead apply the funds from ARPA at that point, um, towards that particular project. I just would like to see this lead flexibility. We have this wonderful position right now where we have flexibility with, with money that we can apply as we need to.
We could set it on to fall without even worrying, because there are other requests for capital at that point, more emergencies that we haven't foreseen, so.
So maybe could we defer the plow truck warrant article to the fall? I mean, they don't need the plow truck.
Well, they can, to place the warrant, to, to place the order in April to have it for next winter.
So, so.
Definitely pushing it off to, to winters and, uh, you know, they've done a lot of work to get the price to have. Like that's a, that's a quoted price, that's not like a.
So then we would just wait for it to be delivered and then we'd pay with ARPA funds if that's.
Well, no, I mean, once, once it's under contract, it's, it's set, you know, and then you pay the funds.
So, so what are the leapfrog steps? If, if we, if we order the, if we order a truck and the, the money behind the order is money that was allocated to town meeting, but six months later at special town meeting, we say, no, we're not going to use that money there, we're instead going to use ARPA funds. What, what handstand do we have to do in order to, for that to be a legal change?
I don't, I don't think that's a, a problem. You would just blow it out, the appropriation back to stabilization. I don't think that'd be, that'd be an internal accounting issue.
Okay, okay, so there isn't.
Now, when we, when we procure something, I mean, you know, to, to award the contract, you know, Jenny needs to attest that the funds are available, but.
Well, that's what I, I know you have to do that. That would think of it as a great.
Based on the town meeting vote.
But I didn't, if you had tested that the funds were coming from town meeting vote, and six months later we said, ah, we're not going to do that, instead we're going to use this money. Does that jeopardize what?
No, because I think that, you know, that money is still there, it's still available, but if you decide to fund it differently, I think it would be okay then to just, yeah, return that money back to where it came from and use the other funding source. As long as that money stays available, it doesn't, right?
I would rather just sit on the ARPA funds to see what happens with the bridge.
Right.
Because that could be a really nice piece of filling in the void. And if we get to fall town meeting, there's probably a half dozen ways. If the bridge hadn't come to fruition, then we could then allocate that money. Even if it went to the capital improvements for the fall, fiscal year was something forward, or paid for something we've acquired and haven't paid for yet. So.
Safe bet is going to be stuff.
I'm sure there would be, but I just would hate to diminish that number now.
So we have to decide in August then, if we're looking at special, you know, fall town meeting. Uh, we'd have to put the warrant article in for whatever we're contemplating.
I think in the next couple of months, we're going to have a better idea on the bridge and the grants and, and the participation. And if that's really, you know, where we'd like to go.
What do you think about that, Jenny? Are you comfortable waiting till the fall?
Um, I, I am. I do have concerns about using ARPA for the bridge. But.
So don't be, don't.
Yeah, interested in hearing.
Um, well, because it's just more money that the town is, our town is contributing. And we can't then ask for reimbursement if we were to do that and, uh, and may have with them, we're worried. So I just, I don't know.
So, so I, I, so that's an interesting perspective. I hadn't heard that. But in just general terms, I agree. I, I really hope that the ARPA funds, you know, speaking for myself, don't have to be applied in the bridge. But if the difference, you know, if, if the choice is we do the bridge and we use ARPA funds, or we don't, we don't repair the bridge, we don't replace the bridge, period. And if it doesn't happen in the next, you know, in the current cycle, uh, it all bets involve forever, I think. Because the, the stars are aligned, they, they seem like they're lining up right now. Um, and I don't know how that would happen again.
So if we were to place an order for the fire pumper truck now, it's, I assume, a similarly long lead time, right?
Actually, um, no, that is short, I mean, it's not short lead time, but.
Before fall to meeting?
Probably run around that timeframe, based on what, um, they were, based on the last part of the fire engineers meeting outside.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I, and, you know, it might be two, three weeks one way or the other, but it sounds like, you know, they're going for that, that, what their intent would be to go with something that's, um, basically a stock product, a, a minor variation on stock product. Cause otherwise you do have a real.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about, um, you know, using the fallback of the dump truck or the pumper truck and ordering it now. Um, I just want to make sure that we are able to pull out the ARPA funding in the end if, if it's not going to be able to be used for the bridge.
Yeah.
So if we ordered the dump truck, that's a long lead time. Are we putting money down when we order it, or?
I don't think so, no.
So then.
You only have to have a contract.
We, we can't pay for it till we have it in hand, so we're signing like a purchase order.
Yeah, but that validates the ARPA money, right?
Right.
You don't have to wait till the truck, it drives into the driveway.
But we have to set it by a certain date.
We, we have to encumber it by this calendar year, and then we have two years after that to spend it.
Two years after, okay, right. Okay. Well, it sounds like consensus is to wait.
Which is, which is fine. I just wanted to, you know, and, and the other reason I, I wanted this on tonight's agenda is, um, and this is, I suggested to Rob, uh, a few days ago, I think this would be a great thing for you to dig into either Thursday or next Tuesday, these funding sources. This is kind of my starting point.
Yeah.
This is the first time you're seeing it, you know, Bingcom, we'll see it, just to see, you know, um, and, and these decisions often aren't made until close to the town meeting, but I think having a good handle on which of the proposed expenses are coming from which funding source is going to be helpful to everybody. So this, uh, two pager that I put in is the first, you know, first time you're seeing this. So this for every financial article shows where, where I would see the money coming from, uh, but these, these can change, uh, things that I put for, you know, pre cash, you could say, oh, that should come from stabilization or vice versa. One thing that I did, and it's a fairly minor thing, but I just, we, uh, the, the two water articles, uh, forty-four thousand, they were shown from stabilization and also this eight thousand.
Yeah, that goes away, the eight thousand goes away.
What do you mean it goes away?
Uh, with, there are many. Oh, which, which is that? The tapping?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's not going to be warrant art.
Well, submit as a warrant article, sorry.
It's not going to be.
Okay, well, if, if, so. So to, to me, that didn't, that's, I think a stabilization is bigger dollar now. It's like, if, if, if it was to be a warrant article theoretically, I would think it'd be a retained earnings. I mean, that's up to them, but, I think a stabilization is like offsetting big swings. And that's such a, you know, relatively small dollar item.
So is Rob. Is that something we're like discussing, using pre cash for stabilization? It, it, they're almost as
Yeah.
two different pockets in the same pair of pants.
Yeah, so you say that, that the, the water department is not pulling into that as warrant, warrant, so it will not be part of their operating budget?
Yeah, I thought I, actually thought I'd mention it.
You did.
Okay.
But they, they put in the warrant article, so.
Well, right, and then some.
That's what I'm going to respond to until they tell me that.
You'll find out Wednesday, it's in the operating budget.
Okay, all right.
So is there an anticipation that all these would be entertained? Because the stabilization being at one point five, and that does not conleave you much.
No, stabilization is at two point one.
Yeah.
And then there'd be six hundred into it.
Okay.
So two point seven minus, but yeah, it would.
Those, those sound TBDs, um, but.
Right, that, that, don't look at the, the totals. There, there, there's tons of stuff that hasn't been flexed out yet.
Right, right.
So then, my expectation is not all these will be able to be accommodated? I mean, it just seems like you're
It's, it's.
eating up a lot of your reserves.
It's a, it's a big, uh, yeah, and there's a couple of huge ticket items in here.
And therein lies the, the ability of the.
But, yeah, but the, the other thing is, is a conversation I had with my, uh, council up in Maine, you don't need to buy things in cash. I mean, it's, you know, this town's used to it, my former town was used to it, but you don't need to put five hundred and sixty thousand down. You can finance the purchase of that truck. I'm not, I mean, it's just something you can, you know.
Right, that's not a bad idea. Again, we don't have debt service, that sort of.
Well, that's, right. So now we're having discussion of having some debt service.
Yeah, I mean, you know, most, most, uh, you know, most people don't buy a car in cash. It's nice to have the cash and do that, but even if you have the cash, you might still choose to finance it for financial management. So, so just cause, and that's why it's no.
Well, the other way to look at it is if we did go heavy into pre cash and stabilization, somewhere in the future, we're going to have to go to debt. That, that's what happened. That's why you want to live five years old, because there's numbers coming up in the five year. That's even bigger than what we're looking at right now, so.
Right, right, and here, yeah. Yeah, and this is why it's notoriously difficult to come up with kind of what, you know, what point is your capital program sufficiently financed? Well, there's a hundred variables in there. If you assume everything's paid in cash, that's one answer, but if you, if you borrow, that's a very different answer, so.
Literally, you just, you know, finance the pumper truck debt. Then keeps your stabilization very solid, gets you a little bit of debt service, so you sort of ease back into that a little.
There you go. Do you have a column there for debt service? Uh, not here, no, no.
No, probably.
And, and, and that, I mean, I don't even, you know, this is a question, I guess, for, for Jenny or for, for our auditor, but, you know, I, I think, I don't know if we're talking debt or financing. I mean, it's a nuanced distinction, but, you know. But, but, but in terms of like, uh, you know, you're not going to the market for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you're, you're financing it through the dealer. And that's so. I don't know what the legalities are, if you need a two-thirds vote, or if you need, you know, um, I know up in Maine, we would do lease purchase agreements for major vehicles. Where we would, uh, finance them over five years and after the fifth year we owned it. So there's, there's a lot of ways to get there.
It's just a way to reduce the impact of stabilization in a pretty reasonable fashion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but having that, having a five-year view of where you're going. Yeah, but having that, having a five year view of where you're going. It's paramount, yeah, we're really informed that.
Well, this, the, this is, this is what we've got, you know, this is, so, and, uh, you know, the further out you get, the.
The fuzzier it gets.
Fuzzier it gets, but the, uh, all, all, you know, all the projects are listed, and, um, yeah, the numbers in the out years get more squishy. But the project's list is.
No, that's, yeah, they don't go away, they just, if you're lucky, you get another two years, so.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Alright.
Great.
Don't ARPA?
I think so, yeah.
What's that?
They're turning out right now. We're just getting into decarbonization.
Well, he's gonna need to read it, it's.
No.
I did.
No, I just think, you're not anticipating reading your statement aloud, or anything?
Oh, absolutely not.
I got the one.
That's right, yeah, Chris is gonna do that all the time.
Yeah, he's all done.
No, I, the first thing I said, I, I think it's very well done, I appreciate that presentation. It explains a lot, so.
Great. Uh, so it looks like you got some answers to the question, did you look at the, well, I guess, did you put the nonprofit thing in here, or is that Angus?
Um, Angus added that, I mean, I looked at it a little bit, but yeah, Angus, uh, loaded that in there.
Okay. So it sounds like.
And I haven't looked through the nonprofit thing in, in detail yet, um, which obviously we need to do, but, um, it's, what, what was in there gives you a, from the original good overview.
Yeah, it just seems like a more applicable.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, I quite honestly didn't know it existed, and, yeah, I don't know how you got to that, cause you sent me.
I just went on their website.
Oh, funny thing.
Yeah.
Never occurred to me.
So, so where do we stand then? Um, I mean, some of the concerns about the commercial side was that it's not strictly applicable, and that maybe the, we don't have enough square footage, which would mean we'd go through the work of applying for it and probably.
Well, we, you know, if we were able to combine, uh, it sounds like we probably don't even need to go down the road any further in discussion of the commercial one, because clearly the, the nonprofit is, is, uh, and, and it's, or in, you know, government, or horribly phrase it, or call it nonprofit, um, that's clearly more appropriate, more intended, um, for, for.
Yeah, so do you wanna pursue that and circle back on this, or?
Uh.
Or what are you looking for?
I, I guess, I would like to, us to make a decision to go ahead and pursue it, um, but Angus, I'm interested in what your perspective is, um, on, you know, on, on whether or not you see an issue, um, operations wise in, in this.
Uh, I, I mean, the, I, I haven't looked at it closely yet, um.
It also doesn't spell out what the process is, you know, in the commercial, it had three phases and specific steps, this just says, you know, contact energy team, and so I'm, I'm a little bit nervous about committing to something without knowing what's involved, you know, from the town's point of view. So.
I mean, you know, if there's, if there's assistance to be had, uh, toward an objective the town has, uh, you know, that, that's not a bad thing, and we have some really excellent staff at this point in, in positions that could really em- embrace this, uh, you know, I think both, uh, Kate and Barker and, and Brian, I think, could be really kind of the lead staff on this, um, and I know, if, you know, at this particular moment, they're, they're super busy too, uh, so it's really just like everything, it's a matter of timing.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if it, if it comes up at a, at the right time, that's better, uh, so as long, you know, I think if it's something we can do on our somewhat, you know, within some parameters, but somewhat in our timeline, rather than, um, so just, I mean, you know, one day with, with Caitlin, like the, the summer rec, I mean, that, that's a huge thing that's gonna take some amount of time for, for a couple of weeks. Once that's all done, it still takes some time, but, but the press is off, so there are different things like that, or, or with Brian, I know he's, he's got projects lined up, you know, into, into April, um, so, but I think they'd be, uh, you know, glad to be, to be part of it, and if there's technical assistance, um, I think they will both learn from that, but yeah, um, you know, I'd be leery with my own time, for obvious reasons, but, but I don't think I would need to really be particularly hands on with this.
Okay, I mean, my interpretation of what I've read so far is that, um, essentially, the, the, the initial focus is on, on a plan, where a plan includes not just the work that would need to be done, but trying to understand how you would fund it, how, you know, how the municipality would fund it. Um, I, 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 again, I haven't gone through in, in deep detail, you know, I haven't gone to every link, um, on, from the page, from the main page, but, um, I, um, I haven't seen anything that, you know, suggests a, um, any kind of hard timeline, you, you know, it's, it's a, there was a reference somewhere that, to me, said the timeline is, has to be what makes sense from the nonprofits' kind of view, um, you know, the intention isn't to, um, you know, to dominate whatever the organization is, we're trying to conclude this plan, but instead need to provide it, a plan, a tool, that can be, can be used, um, you know, discretionary in time, at a discretionary pace.
What do you think they mean by a nominal fee per building enrolled?
Don't have a clue, um, but, but based on power options in general, I mean, they, they have an annual, if you're gonna join power options, um, you know, if, if the town were to participate in power options, I think, uh, Angus, we, um, was Walter, had, it was like fifteen hundred dollars a year, thirteen hundred dollars a year, uh, to, to, to join power options.
Mm-hmm.
And that may actually be the nominal fee.
Well, it says per building enrolled. So we, we would be paying for the roadmap. Slung page fifty.
So I, I can, um, I can do a little digging, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Do you have any thoughts, Chris?
Well, yeah, I just need to know what the benchmarks are, you're gonna apply for a grant, and then you decide whether you're gonna take the grant, then what's the obligation? I mean, suppose they go through this whole thing, and it's cost prohibitive, you obligated to decarbonize? Or follow that plan, I mean, I don't have a problem applying for the grant, it's just what happens and at what stage does your level of commitment accelerate?
Yeah, well, um, on the commercial one, you know, the reference was to, um, committing to be, to get there by twenty fifty. And that's, that's ultimately, that's, you know, this.
The letter you put together, the government's gonna require in general anyways.
Right, e- e- exactly, so, you know, the, it's, as I see it, it's only to our advantage to get ahead of the game, because it's not gonna be, you know, this, the set of buildings here are the least of our problems. Um, you know, there's, there are, there are, you know, a couple of thousand other buildings in town that aren't directly the town's responsibility, but that ultimately create, you know, are part of the overall problem. And, you know, we all enjoy the benefits who suffer the consequences of not, of not dealing with it, and it isn't just, obviously, you know, as I said in that, my little blurb there, you know, we're less than one one millionth of the population's plan, so, you know, this is just a drop in the bucket, but, but it has to start somewhere.
But suppose we get the grant, and we accept the grant, they come up with this roadmap, and the proposal comes together, and it costs, I'll pick a number, five million dollars to decarbonize this building, is there a commitment to then expend those funds? Or is it at your discretion at that point? We don't know what the end could be.
Right, I, it, my interpretation is it's at your discretion, but I'll also say five million dollars, I also say that five million dollars is not, it's not gonna be five hundred million dollars.
Gonna be three million?
No.
We don't know though, that's what I'm saying, but it has a plan.
No, I mean, you know, it, it could be a million dollars, it could be half a million dollars.
Well, I have no idea, and that's why this is like the litmus test, and I don't wanna get, you know, to dig yourself too big a hole.
Alright, so we would want to know.
Right.
What the nominal fee per building is? What commitment there would be?
What commitments and what benchmarks, yes, and what's your final obligation?
And I would like a, an understanding of the staff, you know, how much staff time involved, or volunteer, or, you know, what was Newbury's, uh, Weber input will be.
Okay, so I've got, uh, nominal, what, what's the fee per building? What's the time commitment, staff time, what was this, they have for, there was another.
Final obligation.
Alright. Thanks, Sean.
Alright. This doesn't limit to fifteen, I, I would be interested if you can find out more about the enrollment, you know, if it is only for a number of people, and if it is rolling, right, and rolling mission. Pretty sure I saw that someone. Alright, you ready for bylaws?
Yeah.
Alright, hunting bylaw. So the.
Oh, I changed, could I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't just back up a little bit, so, um, Chris had pointed out, that, uh, two meetings ago, that, you know, we've never talked about the idea of decarbonization as a bullet, and we've never made any kind of decision in regard to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that something we should do? Um, I, 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 I think the town should make, you know, should have, and state an intent to, to accommodate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because otherwise, you know, we will drift along, and maybe we'll do some good things, but we'll drift along without really a goal, um, and, I mean, I guess I'm curious.
So you're talking about before the twenty fifty? I mean, we don't have, we have to by the twenty fifty.
Well, I mean, if we did it tomorrow, that, obviously, we're not gonna do it tomorrow, if we'd done it twenty years ago, would we?
Maybe by twenty fifty.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I would feel like I would need a better understanding of what the financial implications of that were.
That's why, like, so see this one, go through it, see how it goes, then maybe make that commitment if this if it works well.
Yeah.
Not against it.
Yeah, okay.
So no replication of that.
Okay, yeah, enter the perspective, um, and probably most people don't realize it, and it almost is by happenstance, but the library is currently, uh, decarbonized, because the library has heat pumps, and hot, electric hot water here.
And that's what I wanna see on the plan, cause we said.
But, but the library is not an ideal example, because the heat pumps that are there are not, um, they're not to today's standard, um, they're much less efficient.
But you've got multiple ways to achieve it too, it's not just like to solo the heat pumps, or even geothermal gas, right? So that's what you, I sort of wanna see what they come up with for solutions to what we have here, I have no idea what that could be.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thanks.
Okay, uh, the hunting bylaws, the, the basic change here is that rather than saying people can hunt with select board permission, we're just saying no hunting in town on land. Um, the few requests we've had to hunt, we've denied, because they've been in areas that were heavily used by pedestrians and.
And school kids.
And school kids, yeah. So, I mean, my thought is, you know, being so close to Crane Pond, that, that is an area designed for hunting, it's, you know, very large, it's not much use, and it's part of and adjacent to West Newbury, so I don't think we're putting a burden on, you know, people in town that wanna hunt, but.
I told you, I've got a guy on Plum Island, you can do that, it's gonna work well.
Yeah. So, this one, I think is pretty straightforward, um.
Well, I'm gonna play a little bit of jazz, okay?
Can I say yes on your first one, though, weapon?
You wanna include bow hunting?
Oh, a hundred percent, simply because of the danger of it.
So how would we phrase that? It says any weapon, you wanna say including bow hunting?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
If you're gonna have it, you would, but, but on the other hand.
A devil's advocate for real, or?
No, for real, yeah, I.
Cause we, we are running up against our time.
Oh, okay, but, but I, I have something I would say, so.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, um, deer are an ecological problem, because we've allowed them to gun that, because there's no other control on them, and, and, um, I agree with you that Crane Pond Wildlife Management Area is, is an area, there's a lot of land, other smaller parcels of land around town, just where some people do hunt, but, um, you know, we, we've put ourselves in the position of having to do something to, to, uh, control deer population, to avoid other more significant ecological damage, I mean, you know, a lot of native plants don't have a chance to survive at this point, because there's such a high deer population.
I'm not against hunting, it's just having a town on land, simply because of the fact that you've got people doing recreational activities there.
Yeah.
And bullets and arrows, not really good when you're hiking.
So I'm, I'm with you, and I'm with you there a hundred percent, um, so my question is, is there any, is there any part of any town on land, sort of at the, the inner core, where it's farthest away? The answer is maybe no.
You have stables that are allowed to hunt, like the, the birding place out of, uh, well, what's that, out there on the far side of town? It's all hosted, it says the state, and there will be hunters in there and there are.
Yeah.
No, not Crane, I'm thinking of, uh, up at Turkey Hill. Between Turkey Hill and, with that.
Yeah, that's all of the William, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
There, there are always hunters in there.
Yeah, so I get, I think what we need to focus on is whether or not, there, there's only, that, and while I've been on the board, two requests.
Yeah.
So this, yeah, just let me finish my statement, um, so really, that's what we're basing it on, it's not like we have a hundred people who are saying, okay, no, and the deer population's gonna explode, I mean, there's only been two cases.
It is exploding, it was fourteen deer on my drive.
But that's not, that's not what we're discussing, we're discussing whether we wanna continue giving permission on a case by case basis, or whether we wanna just eliminate hunting in town, and, so.
I have always, oh, go ahead.
Well, I would argue that you should keep your flexibility, because it's not a big problem for you to settle this on a case, but it's not like you're being dealt with requests for hunting, and there are circumstances where hunting is, is actually necessary, maybe not the deer, but, um, there are some, some cases where nuisance animals come into a, a community, and they're causing problems for people, um, attacking livestock, attacking dogs, or whatever, and people want them to be eliminated. And if they happen to be on town land, and we have a statute that says you absolutely cannot hunt on town land, then that's not a possibility. Whereas if you just keep it the way it is, and decided on a case by case basis, you keep all the flexibility that you have now, and it's, it's really not, um, a burden, if it was a burden, that would be one. But if it's not a burden, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Well, we've got a couple of problems already that exist, number one is, there are, there are people who on, I know, on Pipe Stave and at River Bend, without permission, um, you know, be a hike in there, and you see them, it's not, it's very disconcerting, um, and I know with Plum Island, you generally can't hunt there, but the state then does at certain times mandate a hunt and get his permits, so you can make.
And they close your island down like all over, ten of those days, yeah.
The, the problem is, these two activities, whether it's hiking, or biking, or whatever, and hunting really don't coexist well.
No, you have to take, you have to do it carefully. No doubt.
Just trying, somebody just sent me a story, I can't even know what it's called, CWD, it's the, the deer getting the disease, and basically it rots their brain, and they're starting to die, and so.
Or chronic wasting disease.
Yeah, chronic wasting disease, thank you, um, it's not necessarily yet, but it's in many parts of the country, I mean, people eat the deer meat. They haven't gotten, yeah, but scientists are saying that they possibly could, so you do have an issue where you might need that kind of hunt, um, so. You know.
So do we wanna add a section that says, you know, that gives, um, the ability for town sanctioned hunting, or something like that, you know, even?
Maybe say in an emergency situation, in conjunction with the animal control office, or the select board could authorize a controlled hunt if necessary, you could add that.
I, I can't see that happening, but I don't, I don't mind adding it if, um.
You don't have to revisit it later if you had enough.
Yeah, what do you think, Angus?
Uh, it seems like, I mean, that would really be really similar to the current situation, where it's only allowed by the board, except it would give a per. Be really similar to the current situation where it's only allowed by the board, except it would give a parameter that the board were only allowed under a certain circumstance, so that. Would advance, you know, I know the sport's been very, very, uh you know, consistency is a very big value. So having some guidance of the bylaws to when it might be allowed or not allowed, because I think that's part of. The concern that you you have that profits forward is when you're saying no, there's nothing in the bylaw that really. Gives any reason of why you might say no, or why you might say yes, so when you say no, it might be seen as arbitrary by the the requester. I think if you were gonna go in the direction of of continuing to, you know. Have language that allows you to authorize it. Um I don't know if you're much better off having, like, only in an emergency as opposed to what you have now, uh because you might be able to. As a matter of policy, say, this board, as opposed to like the board that might exist in five or ten or fifteen years, might have different. Uh reasons to allow or not allow, um so you could do that by policy rather than by law change.
Yeah.
I I think if you if your goal is to just say it's not allowed, I think you should change the bylaw.
Okay.
If if it's not, you know, you might be, it might leave it well not allowed.
Yeah, okay. Um what about the fines?
They did too well, still.
Yeah.
So does he even say something about deferring fines to be decided by somebody else, or?
Well, I know when we get to the animal one, we're gonna recommend having a separate fine schedule rather than putting it in the bylaw.
Alright.
But that's got a lot of numbers, this only has the one.
Alright, so what?
This is more. I think there's more of a public wanting. Situation, in the sense of if you are going to, if if. You're going to commit the events, you'll know what you get, versus like, you don't have to do the dog license.
So a hundred dollars?
About two hundred, because it should be punitive, because these.
Because of the level of risk.
Well, they also know what they're doing, people know you in West Newbury, because I've had a bunch of hunters that want to hunt on my land, they know you have to have the letter.
Right.
They come out and they made sure that their tree stand is a certain distance away from all other properties, they're very, the good hunters are very. Precise in what they do and follow the regulations, and the ones who go into River Bend or Pipe Stave, they deliberately know what they're doing. Uh so the consequences if they choose to do that should be, I don't know who enforces it and who catches them, but. Like, when I see them, I just kind of don't, like eye contact, keep watching.
Yeah.
I I would assume that I. I would I would hope no one else would send out someone to find them, I would assume it would be the police.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so two hundred? Your, if that were.
I'm I'm putting that.
Alright. So, so it sounds like we're just gonna leave these edits as is, other than including bow hunting?
If you want, yeah, but I just.
I think it's two.
Oh, go ahead, it says uh fine person violating any provision, but what exactly is violating? Is it that you are out there attempting to hunt? That you've taken a shot? That you've killed something, I mean, what is the?
Hunt, fire, or discharge any firearm.
So if they're sitting in a tree stand, but they haven't shot anything, and they have a loaded weapon?
Yes.
Yeah, I no, I would, I'd agree, at that point, they're hunting. Yeah, and there's some some place here where I completely agree with with this, you know, I mean, if. You know, if if somebody, if somebody's out on the on the land. And they're carrying a firearm, they're, you know, they're carrying whatever the trace weapon is, and it's loaded, then they're hunting, you know, um. There is a funny thing where, you know, somebody can conceivably walk across the corner of a piece of property with a with a gun. And uh that's loaded or not loaded, and and some people would perceive that as hunting, and some people would say, wow, was that in there?
A lot of them say I'm scoping out the land, that's what they'll say, you know, that's.
Hold your gun at home then.
Yeah. Like, out in JB Little, that's what they tell you, they park and then they go with the guns, and that's what they tell you, I'm just scoping it out.
I have one other kind of devil's advocate question.
Okay.
And I I truly do not know the answer to this. Is there any land that is under control by the town? For which there may be any requirement to allow hunting because of. A funding source that refuses to purchase it or something? The reason I ask, Rebecca mentioned something to me last week, that she she was aware there were some conservation restrictions. That allow hunting, that doesn't mean they require it to be allowed.
Yeah.
But it's just, it's just a question that we ought to be ready for, uh and I don't know if there if there were any like state funding. For some land purchase in in some years past, that that may have uh.
How would we fund that?
I I think, you know, I could, I could, I'll ask Michelle, um and if we can, if there's someone with knowledge of. CRs or, I mean, one thing that comes to mind, I know that this is not really hunting, but there was something knocked down to the way to the river where. Some lands that was acquired, there was, it was, there was some funding, Michelle told me a while ago, that required public access. And uh she happened to know that because she read read up on it, so I just wanna, before we get into like. Public hearings on this, you know, I just want to make sure we we do our homework, and if those questions do come up, that we.
I would suspect that a hunter, if they knew they were, would let you know. Um again, these hunters are very, they use GPS, they check out all the parcels, and they know where mine is, conjunct, their connected valve is, and. It's amazing, the amount of detail that they go in on the research, so I would think they would have scoped it out if there were that opportunity.
Oh, we'll we'll see what we can uh find, we'll just talk around about that.
Okay, so you um, so you won't make the the one edit that we talked about?
Yeah, I, yeah, I made a note to uh. Yeah, include bow hunting and the increase of fines to two hundred dollars, so you can.
Alright. This should be a quick discussion.
Maybe here, not a town meeting, I'm all big.
Yeah.
Last words.
Yeah. Anybody, how do you want to do this? So there's the, I mean, basically the difference is, they have to be on a physical fixed leash, no more under close control. I mean, that's essentially it, the the way that the bylaw was organized didn't make sense, so I tried to clean it up a little bit, um. But really, the only substantive change is having to have the dog on leash.
Can I just play, you change it from shell to a fine to maybe fine, I mean, we should.
So that was, that was my suggestion.
Ah, Jim.
So uh shell means I have to find you no matter what.
Yeah.
So if you come in on May second. Uh you have to pay ten more dollars than the person who came in two days prior under the deadline. They don't, so it it's it's. Sometimes we have an election on May sixth, and I have a booth at the end that said, please pay your dog, oh, I totally forgot to pay my dog. I'd rather waive those fees and get somebody to have their dog license than say, oh, too bad. You have to pay ten extra dollars, and they say, oh, too bad, guess I'm not gonna license my dogs.
Okay, I'm just curious, what I said, that's fine.
So that that's really what it is, it it just allows flexibility from my.
They're gonna pay the value you just said, but just you have some.
So that's just for the licensing fees, right, I I don't.
That would be for the for the fines in.
Of the licensing.
That's, I wouldn't want that to apply to the.
No, so so if any can or fee due on April first, but unpaid on May first, with May.
Okay.
So that that, I put that part in there, so I I can't like, if Rip comes in, I can't waive Rip's fee unless it's over seventy, in which case I can by statute.
Okay.
So the money there, yeah.
The restraint of dogs. I think the general intent is good. But it basically says, if your dog is off leash anywhere but your property, or somebody else's has said it can be there, you're gonna get fined. I think there should be some provision, or like, we have a neighbor somewhere, like, I found a dog running in the woods behind my house. Their dog had broken loose, so to find them, if they called up the. Animal Control Police and said, my dog has broken loose, to find them seems kind of harsh, it's not intentional, so I don't know.
Oh, does he say maybe fined and take it into custody?
Okay, the dog, the dog has escaped and been reported, I should think the fine would not be.
Oh, yeah, that that's not what this is meant for, so you wanted to add that caveat?
Yeah, I just, I think it might uh pacify a few people at town meeting, who are gonna have otherwise issues.
Well, I think if that word, if the word is may, I think it gives the dog officer discretion, so if. I'm putting my dog in a car and my dog jumps out the other door. As opposed to me just opening my car door and allowing my dogs to run free.
I don't believe your dog knows how to open a car door.
Alright, so if it says may, are you?
That's fine.
I mean, we can explain that.
I think that could be a question, so that's all, yeah, okay.
Any else? Are you okay with the fines? Fifty, a hundred, two hundred?
Yeah.
I was curious, in the uh. The license fees, two dash two, any any licenser account fee. Uh remaining unpaid May first, um maybe subject to supplemental fine of uh ten dollars per dog. And then. Again on June first. And again on July first and August first, what happens September, October, November? Alright, or, I mean, we could we could write it in there, I'm I'm just curious, but if somebody is not, I'm I guess is somebody's not.
They want.
Yeah, on September first and say, I have to pay a what, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty dollar fine on top of my fifteen dollar dog tag, they're just not gonna come to the office. Yeah.
Alright, any other changes?
Well, I'm seeing in three seven, there's, it looks like there's a note with your initials, but I don't think what the note is, and by eight dollars.
Oh. Yeah, it's just such a random amount, I don't know where that came.
Okay.
I don't, I think that's what my comments said.
The question was, why eight dollars?
Yeah, I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh who sets the eight dollars?
I think the animal control officer, but I I just, I don't know, that should be updated, or whether there's.
Yeah, we don't know how much.
Shay, I was like, it's probably, it probably shouldn't want the dog loose, so if he tells the data, you can take care of it.
Launching your dog.
I'll be back in a week, I'll be know, it's fifty bucks.
So could we find out from the animal control officer what what that should be, and then just insert that, that'd be great.
Yeah, my my guess is if you were to go to New Report's website, you'd find on their website what it costs to. Yeah.
It'll probably be a little higher than eight dollars.
Okay. So um I did change it to select board, is that okay in a bylaw, even though that's not formally approved?
I I think we changed it another.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah, the only, I think if, you know, if you're signing like a bond issue or something like that. Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's just a matter of time, we'll catch up with, you know, everything there.
Okay. Alright, are we good on that?
Yeah.
That was pretty easy.
I don't know, it's a, it's a, wait, the town meeting.
Yeah, I think it may not be so easy at town meeting.
I I don't know, there's a lot of, I've heard from more people that want a leash law than people that do not want, so.
Maybe this is the thing that rattles everyone to town meeting.
Maybe.
So, so, you know, I look at this and it, you know, occurs to me, should be, should there be some? Some areas where dogs are allowed off leash, I mean, there are people who feel very strongly. Um and I don't have a dog of the race, but there are people who feel very strongly about having a place to allow their, wanting their dogs to be free, or as well.
Yeah.
Um and um.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah, like I said, it's all a separate issue, but it's not unreasonable, like, that row of a dog park is the most used piece of property I've ever seen, it's great.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, there. There are people who like their dogs to go run free in the woods.
Yeah, well, maybe there, maybe, you know, something like Creighton, I don't, again, that's a, another discussion, I don't have a problem with that either.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good for us to, you know, follow the advice we gave Concom a couple of cycles ago on the wetland by law, to. Kind of affirmatively host public information meetings and go above and beyond, unlike uh, you know, public. Uh or public hearing, but but really to try to give people an outlet, multiple outlets before town meeting. Um and there, and ideally before the one, you know, before the pink on process finishes, because you might. From pop uh comments received, you might uh arrive at. Changes to the language or something, so we work on getting something scheduled and then do like a a news announcement.
It'd be good to reach out to Open Space Committee and upon, you know, entities that are impacted or could be impacted by it. Okay. On delivery?
Have we not already approved this? I thought we had.
So um we have not officially, you said, this sounds good, Jim, you should do it, but we didn't. Actually.
We didn't have a policy to support you, so you wrote the procedure.
I wrote the procedure, and I'll I'll post the procedure on on the website, so people know what they need to do. Um but I I wanted something in writing, that gave me the power as opposed to me just doing things.
We'll make a motion to approve the delivery operation letter policy.
Okay.
On paper, bye.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, minutes? Did you review both of these?
I have no issue with it.
I I have a question on the first set on item B on the tree committee, it said this item was tabled for a future meeting. I thought we went ahead and voted to increase the size to seven members.
You did.
So that this item, that can be struck. Right? Yeah.
So. Not again, this is the charge, this committee's charge, and it says the item is stable for the future, it should actually say the foreign voted in approved.
Yeah, there's, I don't know if we have the vote and everything.
When, I'm sure we do, yeah.
Um on page seventy-two, under town manager updates, um Jennings is dispelled.
Uh what's the missing something?
Jennings, town manager, Jennings is.
Oh yeah, there's missing a half.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jennings, Jimmy.
Um and so anything on that set of minutes? You guys are good? Um I did have one comment on the second set. Uh on page. Uh seventy-five. On item E, on the farm by law. Uh it says Reed stated that the committee members would be appointed by the select board, and we actually decided not to appoint. Um they were just gonna form an informal committee. So I think you can just strike that. That works, and then on the bottom of that page, under general discussion. And item B. Um Reed confirmed with Jennings, if he would like to use the updated evaluation forms recently created, and. Uh he actually said no, he wanted to use the one we had before, so that just makes it sound like he's gonna use the same thing. I did ask him that, but the answer was no. And other than that, they're good. So I am willing to accept both sets of minutes as amended.
Sure.
On paper? Okay, um. The discussion items, do you want to cover this, Angus? And then the her own reasons to study?
Well, it, just on the agenda, it's just as any dog can have received, I mean, I I can tell you, I personally haven't had time to read them, uh like. Skimmed over them, but but uh we'll certainly be reading them and reading them closely. I know some on staff have, and certainly members of the committee have, and they'll talk about it in in much more detail on on Wednesday, but. You know, they're they're extremely consequential, um. So uh, you know, we all, we all need to read them closely, and I definitely wanted to make the bullet there that the uh consultants. Have asked that all comments be provided to them by, uh ahead of the next, uh their next meeting with the. Working group on the twenty-eighth, uh so where your next meeting, other than the Pinkcom joint meetings, is uh the twenty-sixth. I didn't want that to creep up on us, so if the board intended to. Put any shared comments, uh we would want to have those. For consideration by the twenty-sixth, or you may choose to each individually comment, which may be just as well.
I think that's.
I think that's honestly probably just as well, you know, the the bargaining material, uh and just expediency, um.
Okay.
But this has definitely illustrated uh. One of the consequences of the state giving us ten months to do something that we thought was gonna be a two-year process, uh we certainly would have. Like to have more time to review and provide multiple sets of comments, but that's not. How it's gonna go because of the state dictate on the uh the grant timeline.
Okay. Well, any update on what your? School? Updates at the D?
They have their uh, they have a posted meeting tomorrow with the with the weather, who knows, I do know, uh April public schools has already. I do know April Public Schools has already closed for tomorrow, so I'm assuming that will affect the Whittier meeting tomorrow night. Yeah, and Tuckett's already closed for tomorrow as well, so.
So I did want to ask, I mean, they're not on the same night anymore, but did we want to send one member to Whittier or?
Well, that was part of what I, I thought we'd talk about tonight.
Do we think it's important to have somebody there? I mean, it's one item on the agenda. I, I would hate to like miss the Penticoot and have it be like building committee disbanded, you know, that meeting closed.
Right.
Which is basically what happened.
There will be, I assume like as well.
Oh, there will be.
So if you go to our website.
So could it be recorded?
I don't know about that.
I think that's what Rebecca did on the building committee, she just recorded there, right?
Well, they would have to be the ones that initiate the.
Yeah, I'm not sure. She was taking notes.
Oh, she took notes, yeah.
So if you, I believe, yeah, so the zoom link is on there. So if you go to our website, under Whittier Vocational Technical High School Committee.
So maybe they're just going to have, have it be removed tomorrow?
They might, but they also might, because you need, it's a hybrid meeting. So if they didn't say it's a adult meeting, so they may have to be somebody there, they might cancel the meeting as well.
Absolutely, because the storm is supposed to be moved out by that time.
Yeah, so they, they might want to have the meeting. But if you want to be there, but if you want to attend by zoom, the link is there.
Okay. So are you planning on attending?
I may, if, the Tuckett's already been canceled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They love me in the zone there.
There's nothing wrong with some, uh, Washington meeting.
Okay. All right, any else on Whittier, I guess? Okay, so then we just have one correspondence about.
Yeah.
There's nothing else there?
Curious, huh?
Yeah, it is very. So there's really nothing we can do about, right? Media's asking for our assistance, but. Or is he just making us aware?
I'm sure he appreciates our assistance. We could call the state to, the bureaucrats that are not responding to actually pay attention.
That's two thousand and nine.
Right, yeah.
I mean, so if the town invested money in maintaining that structure and then all of a sudden it's private property and you can't, residents can't use it, that's kind of problematic.
It sounds like legitimately that West Newbury and Newbury Port all portions that he owns, as he says, just a spillway.
Yeah.
There's got to be legal documentation. He can point them in the direction and say, we belong.
Yeah.
Yeah. I remember when we funded that, it was just two years or so after moving into town. After I moved into town. So, yeah, I mean, the town, you know, clearly has money in it.
They also said he's a West Newbury taxpayer, but he's.
Well, he has a little parcel. He's a little, I, I look at the tax cap, he's a little tiny person. So I don't know what the, I didn't look at the assessed value, but yeah.
I mean, again, I don't understand, other than get, making us aware what he's looking for.
What do you think about just forwarding the correspondence to the office of damn safety, saying, hey, we're receipt of this. What can you tell us?
Yeah.
Doesn't cost us anything. We might, you know, we probably learned something.
Yeah.
And at least, you know, we, and see where that goes. We could, we could certainly do that.
Do we, do we want to say anything to the effect of this sounds like illegitimate concern by the owner? Or do we want to not state any?
I, I would, just being for myself, I, I don't have an opinion. So I would just send it to them and say, hey, receive this, what can you tell us?
Yeah.
And just. Yeah. It doesn't, we're still doing something different later, but given that my poking sun budget, I don't have five bucks for this.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the other thing he's looking for at the end of the day is, say, I want to have to do the inspection. And he said it's too costly for him to do, he wouldn't. So theoretically, if he doesn't and it goes back to West Newbury and Newbury Port, we're going to have to do a damn inspection. That's where it goes. So just be aware that there will be costs eventually coming our way on it.
Back to Whittier for a second. They updated their, it looks like they updated their website. So if they cancel a meeting, they have to look at cancellation notice, so.
Okay.
If you can find your way to that part of the website, it's not super easy, but.
I was just trying to look. I didn't see a cancellation notice.
Correct. Well, one of their meetings tomorrow for the salary and negotiation subcommittee, they've already canceled it.
Right.
Literally.
But wasn't that during the day?
Uh, that was.
No, it's correct.
Well, I mean, more storm like, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't see, I didn't see anything on the regular school.
Yeah, as, as of right now, it looks like it's still on, but.
Would you let us know if you? All right, thanks.
Yeah, so the percent, probability of precipitation drops to 10% by five o'clock in the afternoon.
Right.
So it's pretty.
It's going to take a while though to finish clearing parking lot.
Yeah. I'm sure you have the emails.
All right, future done items? Eight fifty-nine, you have one minute?
Um, just a good thought. And it's relevant to something we talked about, it was actually on the minutes. The, uh, right farm thing, we talked about the idea of a farmer's market. Has there? How could the Grange fit into this?
They have been doing one there.
Yeah, they, they used to do something, I don't know if they still are, but it seems to me like that's a logical pairing. And maybe, maybe there's a reason why they're not in this conversation.
They, turns out they are. So I got an email over the weekend from a proponent of the right to farm bylaw saying there's a whole like parallel effort by the Grange with, they invited Bruce Tar and the media and some type of thing. So I'm going to go to that, it's on March 9th, but.
Yeah, I think March 8th.
March 8th, surprising.
Did, did they happen to forward you whatever correspondence was sent out?
No.
Like the, because I, I think you probably know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hand on that.
Yeah, it's just seems kind of odd, all of a sudden Tar, you know, Senator Tar's involved in the media and I don't know if they would. And the tone of the email suggested that she thought maybe we should do it our way, so I don't know what's going on exactly.
Well, we should do it our way.
Saying that what I outlined to them as far as having a committee draft a bylaw and go to town meeting would be a preferable way to do it, but she didn't say what the alternative was, but, yeah. So I don't know what was actually happening with this. So I'll, I'll attend that.
Yeah. I just think it's interesting. I mean, the Grange is, you know, a historic part of the community. And, you know, particularly back when it was truly a cultural community, the Grange would have had a pretty strong place in, in the community. And, and, you know, of course that's changed. But it still exists and there's still people committed to it.
Yeah.
The, as you know, there's been a lot of discussion of the assessing, you know, change in evaluations. And I, I did meet with the assessor and have, you know, suggested they have like a agenda that for a topic. So I'm not sure, I mean, obviously that's totally independent of, of this board in my office. You know, independent elected board. So I think my thought would be I just, you know, work with them to help make sure they have the support they need on like a venue, a date and, and any kind of outreach. And then maybe once that gets pinned down, maybe, you know, we might, we might choose to attend. But I do think it's important to, to maintain that clear understanding from taxpayers that the assessing is an objective, you know, something that's under the charge of those, that way. Something we, we ought to be aware of and are aware of the grounds. But I don't want to, you know, confuse the issue by, for instance, having this board agenda it bring the board of assessors, which makes it seem like they're like.
I think you want to keep it real separate.
Yeah, yeah. But it is something that's obviously a lot of people are talking about, concerned about. And there's some amount of misinformation that, that's going around and some amount of villainizing of, of both staff and elected officials, which is.
I think that would be good to do a public presentation on it because you read it and it sounds legitimate. And they just sit there and go, where are the holes in the story? So, and they know there's more to it. So it's got to get cleared up hopefully before town meeting.
Yeah.
It would be very disruptive.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I could make a motion to adjourn if you'd like.
Sure.